Thank you, everyone. Welcome. It's Monday, July 25, 2022. It's 5:30. Time for our work session. Our agenda is a very wonderful time for us here and a sobering time as well, which we'll hear from the Chief of Police. It's to present a couple of words to two of our police officers. So Chief Allen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Oh, I need to know who's here. My fault. Okay, clerk color roll.
Councilmember Heller.
President.
Councilmember Jacobs. Councilmember Jorgensen. Here, Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to pay tribute to two of our amazing officers today. Before we honor our two amazing officers for their bravery and courage, I think it would be remiss not to acknowledge that the incident resulted in the death of an individual. Although that individual made some decisions that night because the officers to respond with lethal force, it is imperative for all to understand that we're not celebrating the death, but rather honoring the actions and the professionalism of our officers. During the early morning hours of April 13, 2021, these officers were forced to make a challenging and life-altering decision in mere milliseconds. Everyone involved in this incident, to include the officers, their families, and the family members of the deceased will be impacted for the rest of their life. Mr. Mayor and Council, today we're here to honor two members of the Garden City Police Department who responded with bravery and courage while facing great danger. We're here to honor Sergeant Robbie Haney and Officer John Anderson and present them with the Silver Star for bravery. That's Sergeant Haney, Officer Anderson, the mayor, the council.
Counsel, let's go down.
Mr. Mayor and Council, as most of you have heard me say before, a career in law enforcement can be extremely challenging, both physically and mentally. Those challenges have been magnified over the last couple of years. We have all recently seen an increased media coverage detailing when law enforcement officers do not meet the community expectations. We're here today to celebrate and honor the actions of Sergeant Haney and Officer Anderson, whose actions exceeded standards and in fact were remarkable and courageous. Lieutenant Patterson, can you provide us a synopsis of that event?
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, Council, a brief synopsis of the events that transpired leading up to this event. On April 13, 2021, at approximately 12:52 a.m., Sergeant Haney, Officer Anderson, and Officer Moore of the Garden City Police Department responded over a report of a domestic disturbance in the 5100 block of Quinella Street. Upon arrival, they met with a female sitting on the front step of the residence. She indicated that her husband was intoxicated and that they'd been arguing throughout the evening. She further indicated that she may have injured him and he may need medical attention. After hearing that information, Officer Anderson attempted to make contact at the front door by knocking. A few moments later, the male subject emerged from the residence armed with a handgun. As he exited the residence, he pointed that handgun at Officer Anderson's head and threatened to kill him. Sergeant Haney and Officer Anderson were both forced to draw and fire their service weapons to defend the lives of officers and others on the scene. At the time of the attack, Officer Moore and the female were not in a position to defend themselves, thus magnifying the danger to those present. Upon incapacitating the male, officers immediately requested paramedics and began providing lifesaving measures to include CPR that lasted for several minutes. The male eventually succumbed to his injuries. This incident was investigated by the Ada County Critical Incident Task Force, which was led by the Ada County Sheriff's Office. Upon completion of their investigation, that report was forwarded to the Valley County Prosecutor, Brian Nogal, to review. He determined that the use of force was justified and the officer's actions were legal.
Mr. Mayor and Council, these two officers exemplified the true spirit of law enforcement. They did not retreat when faced with danger, but in fact, the videos show they did the exact opposite and moved towards the armed suspect, knowing that they had to neutralize the threat to prevent themselves and others from being harmed. Even more noteworthy was their actions after being assaulted and discharging their service weapons. These officers worked diligently in their attempts to save the subject's life until emergency medical personnel arrived on scene. Although this incident is tragic, and we all wish we could change the outcome, I could not be prouder of the actions of Sergeant Haney and Officer Anderson. They are two models of our service motto, service, I'm sorry, safety, excellence, respect, valor, integrity, community, and empathy. Mr. Mayor and Council, it is with great honor I present Sergeant Robbie Haney and Officer John Anderson to you for presentation of the Silver Star for bravery. This medal was awarded by the National Police Hall of Fame located in Titusville, Florida. The Silver Star for bravery is issued to an extraordinary or an officer who demonstrates extraordinary heroism in the line of duty, recognizes an officer whose act of courage goes above and beyond the normal call for duty.
That concludes the work session agenda. We stand adjourned until 6 o'clock and will convene the city council. Welcome, everyone. It's Monday, July 25, 2022. It's time for the regularly scheduled city council meeting for the city of Garden City. Ask the clerk to call the rule. Ask the clerk pardon me to certify the meeting notice first.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Thanks. Have the clerk call the rule.
Councilmember Heller.
President.
Councilmember Jacobs. Councilmember Jorgensen. Here, Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. If you'd stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D is changes to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agendas. Are any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to special business. Mr. Bleezer, did I pronounce your name right? Sort of. Probably not very close. You're very gracious. Welcome. It's a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Robbie Blazard. You just barely missed the pronunciation.
Just barely missed it quite a bit, but that's all right. Thank you.
But you pronounce it phonetically, which I think is something. So I'm a deputy prosecutor with Ada County. I'm here on behalf of Jan Bennett in that capacity as a deputy prosecutor. Over the course of the last few years, I have supervised the magistrate division, which is responsible for prosecuting the infractions and misdemeanors that occur here in Garden City, at least those that are not city code violations, those that are state code violations. It's been a pleasure to work on this contract. You know, we took it over some few years ago. While I was supervising the division, I have since moved on to a different role in the office and the new supervisor of the magistrate division is Michael Guy. He's actually sitting here with me here. There he is. So I'm happy to report to Mr. Mayor and to you, members of the city council, that we continue to work closely with Garden City Police in working to keep the community safe here. I think the relationship is good. I guess I can speak from my side of the relationship, but I haven't heard too many complaints from Chief Allen back there or others in his command staff. And in fact, we routinely meet together. We do trainings together that are involved, that are more a lot of times related to the felony work, the work that we do by statute for the people of Garden City, but for all the people of Ada County. But there is certainly some overlap. So I'd like to talk about our request for budget for the upcoming fiscal year. We're not asking for an increase in the contract amount. Currently, that's $139,000 for prosecution services. Again, that includes infractions and misdemeanor prosecution. Packaged with those services, the prosecution services, our victim witness services, we have legal assistants who work with us and help us with our cases. We have restitution coordinators who help us collect on restitution, not only figure out what the correct amount of restitution to request is, but also to collect on that restitution, also on the fines and costs that are assessed during court proceedings. That also includes the work we do on probation violations and proceedings. I can report that for the fiscal year of 2021, we handled 785 new cases for Garden City. That's a combination of misdemeanors and infractions. Year to date, so from January to now, we are on track to likely exceed that number. I think we've seen just a year-over-year increase in charges filed. Nothing so significant, but we do see an increase. And I'm happy to speak more. I have kind of here in my notes to go into some more detail about the kinds of services we offer. I won't go into that in greater detail unless members of the city council, Mr. Mayor, you have questions about those services. I'm happy to go into detail about those as you may request. So at this point, I'd stand.
So members of your staff, answer the phone at 2:30 in the morning with a what-if question or a how-do-I question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. That is accurate. We do answer the phone at 2:30 in the morning. We provide on-call services that are truly 24/7. In fact, we had, I think it's been about a year and a half ago now, but we had a after-hours search warrant that we had to do for some snakes is what it was for, and that was on this misdemeanor contract actually that it applied to, to go in and see some snakes that were being, I guess, kept unlawfully. And so that's just one little kind of extreme example, but it's frankly a nightly occurrence sometimes for blood draw warrants, for DUIs and that sort of thing. It also applies to the domestic violence charges that we have to get arrest warrants for.
Great. Are there questions, Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Not really a question. I just want to thank you and the county in general, I guess, for the your service to Garden City. I realize it's a contract, but I just have to remark and make a record that I think that is such a great value and I'm appreciative of, you know, the bottom line and that you're able to maintain that. If I heard you write 785 cases last year and to know, you know, victim witness coordination, PV restitution, misdemeanor code enforcement, it's a big buy. And that's a trim menu price. So, thank you. Yeah, thank you. You're welcome, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Page, and members of the city council. I will just only find note I'll make on that. I'm appreciative of your appreciation. I will just say that we do not do code enforcement, so that is still Mr. Waddams here who handles that stuff. A very small amount of work. I will be far less gracious. But thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would also like to echo President of Council, Member Page's comments in expressing my gratitude, particularly surrounding DV cases. That is a specific issue and initiative that I'm helping drive through the city and we want to improve education and reduce the need actually for prosecution at some point. However, I have a question regarding ability to support what I anticipate will be, hopefully, much increased prosecution this year as we continue to see drug trafficking. Chief Allen has publicly stated that we will actively go out and prosecute those that are trafficking drugs and making our city unsafe. To that end, and I'm not sure if you can answer this, is staffing adequate? And Chief Allen, I have no idea what the increase will be, but certainly if we review Chief Allen's staff report this month in the increase in drug trafficking, what kind of demand will that place on your staff in office?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So a couple of parts to that question. First off, the part on trafficking. Trafficking is a felony offense and we do prosecute trafficking offenses that occur in Garden City. We actually do that apart from the work we do on the contract that I'm talking about. That's the felony work that we do is by statute. And so we're going to do those cases, you know, regardless of the contract here. But I can still answer the question about staffing and all of that, at least for purposes of our office. I'm sure Chief Allen can speak better to the Garden City Police and what they're doing. But I can assure you that, yes, we do have adequate staffing in the office to handle even an increase in cases. We've always, I guess, risen to the demand in the past and will continue to do so over time. Our office has increased staff members over the course of the last about, well, so I've been in the office now a little more than 10 years and we have increased by at least a dozen prosecutors in the office in that short period of time. And it may be even more than that. I may be underestimating. So yes, I guess that the answer to your question is yes, we do have the adequate staffing and we will will increase staffing if necessary to meet demand, but I doubt that that would be necessary. I see Chief Allen standing here. I don't know if you had something to say about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you for coming. Welcome to your new role. Congratulations. Okay, next item. I have two monthly staff reports. Anything you want to address publicly and with the staff reports?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have two items. One would be for Chief Allen. And it is simply a matter of curiosity. What is the street value of 1,500 plus fentanyl pills?
Great question. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, can I get back to you on that? Because it changes and it's changed. Fentanyl was not the product of choice when I was working in the streets. So I'd want to talk to the narcotics detectives and see what a pill is going for. But the more you buy, it's supply and demand. So the more you buy, the better the rates.
Discount, volume discount?
Volume discounts. So I'm not sure if we did 1,500 straight pills, what we would get those for, but I would definitely check into that and get back to you. I think on my guess would be you're probably talking 20 bucks a pill if you're buying them individually on the street.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Chief Allen, you mentioned that some of the drugs and things are that you've mentioned are linked to the hotels on Chindon or motels. Can you just give it a snup date of what type of police work is going on to curtail that?
Well, we do a lot of drug interdiction, traffic stops. We use a lot of intel. We use a lot of information sources. Every good police officer has information sources to share information with them. We get crime stoppers tips that come in. We target specific residences that are known for narcotics or specific rooms that are known for narcotics and we just monitor and it's no secret that we look for them to commit traffic infractions or violate law and then we have a reason to contact them.
How is, has the ownership of those establishments, the motels and hotels been?
They've been very receptive. Two of the motels, one just changed hands and was sold. There's three down in that area. One just changed chances past week and I believe they're going to do some remodeling. And we look forward to working with the owners. The great thing about them is the owners did contact us and reached out and said, hey, we want to change the image of our establishment. And so it sounds like that's moving in the right direction. The other two, they're owned by an elderly couple and their sons are kind of running those motels. Their sons are well-established within the community, professionals within the community. And I think they want to change. They've been really trying to work with us. I think we need to work with them on how those changes need to occur. It's really hard to tell somebody what to do with their property as long as they're meeting certain code. And it's really hard with motels to tell them, hey, these are the people you can and can't rent to, just like it would be a landlord. What we try to do is share information and they've been really proactive in moving their clients along if they are problem children. The problem is they cater to a lot of problem children and one leaves and it's like like drug dealers that we've all seen. One leaves, another one fills in. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I apologize. I do have one other question for Chief Allen. Would you mind, for the benefit of the council, providing an update on the the community meeting we have regarding parking for on 42nd and 43rd?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, I'd love to do that. We hosted a meeting. This was requested by one of the council members to look at the parking in that area and Councilmember Jorgensen. It's been a hot topic, 42nd, 43rd. They're very congested between UPS trucks, school buses, and all the grass and produce. So we held a community meeting with all the business owners in that area and we discussed some goals moving forward. The first meeting we had last week, what they came up with is we all have the same concerns with the congestion and we agreed that we'd all work together to try to come up with a solution. And we had a CHD president or president at that meeting. So I think that we will see some recommendations come forward to the council on what we might want to do down there. What we're trying to do is make it community-driven. So it's not, my concern with it is we don't want the government or the police department. We're happy to facilitate, but I don't think it should be our decision. We want to hear from the constituents down in that area, the people we serve, what they think would best suit them and hopefully we can come together as a group and come up with a good plan. I was impressed with their willingness to work together. I think they understand, hey, what might be best for my business might not be best for the area and they've all committed to working for what's, towards what's best for the area. So did I miss anything?
No, but I wanted to publicly, since I fell to at the meeting, I wanted to thank you and the officers and the staff that attended the meeting. I thought it was very well coordinated and there was a lot of value that came out of the meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything further for Chief Allen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I do have a question and/or a discussion that I would like to involve Colin in, if possible. And it may be a very short discussion. On item 11 in your report regarding updating and working on the green belt on a section between Epeina Head and Duxbury Pier. I actually wanted to call that out and ask Councilmember Jacobs if you are working with or having conversations with Colin regarding this update because I know Lakeland Village HOA may want to participate and we have our own, well, as you're very familiar, there's other issues with the green belt that travels along the backside of Lakeland Village.
So the answer is yes. Colin and I have discussed extensively and more about just, you know, what section needs to be repaired with the associations involved or fair because there's also Antwood Estates. It's also involved and actually, you know, a lot of the work is going to come down that road and it's going to hang, you know, a sharp turn down towards, down the green belt. So in terms of community comment, Colin, yes. Time, more timing and those type of things, so that we could notify the community of when it's going to start, when the detours are going to go to the place because literally you're not going to be able to use that section of the green belt and a lot of people use that section of the green belt. They're going to have to find an alternate way to get around it. And so I think my next step is I've done some Facebook and social media posts, but just to contact the HOA, just okay, this is happening and I think they've sent out the communication as well.
Okay, that was one of my concerns is communicating particularly on this section between Epeina Head and Duxbury Pier. If it's slated to begin August 1st, I would hope that notice would start going out this week, if at all possible.
Yeah, so Mayor, council members, the Garden City website has a map and a notice on there about the upcoming construction. We've also placed sandwich boards throughout the area at a lot of the different areas where you're going to have to get off the path to detour around. They've been placed out there and work is slated to start on the first, next Monday. And what my plan is, is that we're going to, we'll take care of the north-south portion of it first, right after just downstream of West Bridge. Get, whoops, get that out of the way. And then that will open up that area from the West Bridge out to Duxbury. That'll get people, that's a huge, that's a huge part right there. So once we open that, that'll take care of the big detour that we have that's going to start right outside the door here because you're going to have to go over Glenwood or Glenwood Bridge to get to the north side. So that's the plan right now. And this whole thing will take about two weeks. So my guess is when the dust settles, everybody will, it'll pass before, almost before it starts. So it'll be pretty quick. Again, we're just replacing asphalt with asphalt. We're putting root barrier in to alleviate some of the root growth. It's tearing apart that path. And in the future, the plan is to put concrete through there, but that's kind of at the far end of where we're starting here. So, yep. The word's out.
Great. Thank you.
Be back.
Welcome. Anything further, Council, on the staff reports? Very good. Thank you. We'll move into item G1. This item's been continued from, continued twice from 6/27 and 7/11, 2022. It's S U V F Y 2021-001. Ms. Hornborough, could you come? Ms. Hornborough, could you come up and just kind of review where we are on this?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. And this item, uh, two here, or two meetings ago, was heard and continued. Um, and it was continued again to a date certain of today. Due to some late submittals in the, the council's inability to review those as they were submitted the day of. Um, this item, it does start on page thirty of your packet. And at this point in time, the applicant has not submitted revised materials and has confirmed that the intent is not to submit revised materials. There is a shadow plan, the material that was submitted the day of the previous hearing, showing a hammerhead going over two of the lots. Uh, but the intent, as I understand it, um, is not to amend the plat to that configuration, but just to show what a hammerhead would do if it was put in that place. Um, at the last meeting, there was a request to reach out to agencies and staff did reach out to both Republic Services as well as the Fire Department and they provided some clarification that's in your packet. Um, Republic Services did note that they felt that the safest option would be to have onsite trash service and the Fire Department did note that they would have no problem servicing the application as it's drafted and that there is more than a hundred and fifty or less than a hundred and fifty feet, uh, which they could adequately service. And and those, those responses are emails. Um, the Fire Department is on page thirty five and Republic Services is on page thirty seven of your packet. Um, just to note, uh, there are a reminder that this application does have conflicting recommendations from the recommending bodies. Um, on page thirty nine, there's a draft potential decision document that corresponds with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for approval. And on page sixty three, there is a draft potential decision document corresponding with the Design Review Committee's recommendation, uh, which is in denial. Um, as previously noted, the Design Review Committee did note um, a couple of items that they would suggest, uh, should this application be approved, um, may, may help. Um, and that's an addition of three bicycle parking spaces. Uh, that's number eighteen on page eighteen of the decision document on page thirty nine. So doing math there. Um, there's another, uh, potential, uh, condition that they noted, uh, that could assist this application. And direct to access from the common lot to the public pathway that runs to the side of the application be added. And then there's two additional, um, or three additional on page twenty of that decision document, uh, the, what was not included in the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, but was suggested by the Design Review. Excuse me, um, is excuse me, there would be, need to be another waiver, which is noted on page twenty one for the guest parking spots and that this application is requesting a waiver for one point five or two guest parking spaces. Hopefully that was a little that you were able to follow or I'm happy to restate that clear since I was not very clear in stating those. And the council may sustain, reject or remand um, either of the recommendations and certainly could amend either of the recommendations as well. Um, and just as a reminder, the waivers that are being requested are more for more than four units per common driveway for pressurized irrigation, for street light, for the guest parking as already noted, as well as for covered parking for the new units. There would be seven new proposed residential units. Code requires residential parking to include two covered parking spaces and this, uh, application is requesting that just one of those two for each unit be covered. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions? Just wanted it is updated on where we were from the staff side.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've held the hearing portion open on this. Applicant may join us. Yes. We've got time. Take your time. Welcome, Mr. Colcheck. If you would give us your name and address for the record. Craig Colcheck. My address is forty eight thirty nine Mountain View Drive, Boise, Idaho. Mr. Mayor, council members. We had a an exhibit to show what would happen if we did the turnaround. Is there a possibility of naming it up on the screen? We have it in our packet. I think it's on page thirty, council. So this, this represents the recommendation from staff to put in a turnaround. Um, also in your packet, there should be a highlighted letter from, email from the Republic Services that states that the three choices that are made, that they were given to us on January fifth are safe and reliable service pickups. Each one of them are, one may be safer, but they're all safe. And that's, that's highlighted in the packet that I gave you guys. By, by putting the, the turnaround as shown on exhibit that I supplied. And this is, I'm looking at the black and white one, but I also submitted a landscaping plan that showed a little more detail and that should be in your packet as well. By put, by putting the the turnaround, we eliminate another unit. We eliminate all of our open space. We also infringe on the two parking spaces per unit on the two most northern parcels. And we eliminate multiple trees now. I submitted a landscaping plan along with this other plan that shows this. And I apologize for the delay. That'd be fine. Um, well, this doesn't show the turnaround, but you can get the gist of it. If we put the turner on and the way it's shown on your packet, we're gonna eliminate one, two, three more trees, several shrubs along the outside. Um, we'll eliminate one more unit. So, and we'll eliminate the guest parking that we have. So essentially we'll eliminate all our open space requirements, all the landscape requirements, all the guest parking requirements that we had in there. Um, and the letter that was sent to you guys through this packet that highlights the fact that the Republic Services states in the second sentence in the email that was sent to myself and Hannah, that the three choices are safe and reliable. I'm gonna take that for their word. In addition to that, there was another suggestion that we take one of the units out on the west side to put it on where the lawn is now on the north end where our landscaping, our open space, our guest parking is. And put guest parking down at the bottom, um, southernmost unit. And then infringe on the existing home and have a drive-through on their driveway that would eliminate them being able to access their garage or anything else. That was feasible. Also, in, in light of the fact that, um, there's been comments that have been made that this isn't a safe way to pick up the trash from the street, uh, I talked to the chief of police and asked him to do some research on any accidents involving garbage trucks along Allworth and Adam Street. You could take the time to mention we discussed. Yeah, I, I think we've and we have in the synopsis, in the last five years, there's been what accident over there involving the trash? I don't think we're disputing that. So the, the scenarios that Hannah and Jenna put together were, you know, they did a great job in putting up suggestions. But each suggestion made this project less feasible. You know, we, we put our heads together and put the best project we could put together. We've made over the last, um, team million applications, we've done seventeen re-submittals. In addition to that, if you take a look at the drawing that I'm showing you right now, uh, we've met the three parking spaces. We've also given access to, um, the green belt through the common area. If we put the turnaround, we wouldn't be able to have an access to the the green belt that had disappeared too, as well as the three bicycle parking spaces. So I guess what I'm saying is that the, the plan that we have now, based on what we've done and the changes we've made, is, you know, the best we can do. I, I think we've met the safety requirements based on the, um, application and the letter that we got from, uh, Republic Services to say this is a safe and reliable, uh, method of picking up trash off the street. And redesigning this would just make this project non-workable. And that's all I've got. Okay, uh, thank you. Any questions, council? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go limp back this way. Yeah. Uh, I don't know if there'll be a need to recall you if you want to walk all the way back and then, okay, all right. I see. All right. All right. Yes. Council, we held this hearing open to accommodate the need for you to deal with the late submittal. Hopefully you've had a time to review that and also to glean any new information that might be forthcoming, which Mr. Colcheck has just visited with us about. So with that, I think we're in a position now where we can close the public hearing and turn to the council for discussion and deliberation.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to move and have discussion after my movement, um, in search of a second, um, here to discussion of my fellow council members. So I, I move that we sustain the design review decision for this, uh, for this application. And, uh, by way of discussion, I'm, I'll, I'll begin and leave it to my colleagues if they have other comments. In our earlier hearing, we
You wanted to get a second for that and then go to discussion? Or are you just intending to make that motion? Okay.
Motion is hereby made.
The motion has been made to sustain the design review, uh, decision. Uh, if we get a second, then we'll go to discussion.
I would second the motion.
They got a motion and second now. It's open for discussion, uh, council, president.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry for being out there.
I forgot to call roll while we go, so.
At our, at our earlier hearings on this project, we have been provided with conflicting recommendations. I, speaking for myself and not for the council, uh, have leaned toward the design reviews recommendation. Feeling that the what's being asked of the parcel of land is, uh, it's really burdening to accomplish this, this level of density in this space. Uh, and I think that's clear as, as we look at the, uh, the, the number of variances or conditions that, that must be granted in order to make that make that project work, uh, within our ordinance and our code. We asked, uh, Mr. Colcheck to come back with some creative ideas to overcome, uh, these deficiencies. And candidly, I feel that we've received some suggestions that were from, from what I can read in the packet came from, from our own people, from, uh, our, our planning department. Applicant, Mr. Colcheck, today has provided, uh, the same drawing. Uh, this is the best we can do. I realize it's not ideal. And I want to remove safety. That's not in dispute. Like if the garbage, you know, if it's, if it's safe, it's safe. And I, and I want to be clear that I'm not making any not making this motion with safety in mind. It, to me, is, uh, does not provide for adequate parking. And, uh, and that alone is enough. And those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor. I take, take note that on June twenty seventh, I, I was absent from that meeting and President of the Council advised to move to a date certain to allow more time for the applicant to reconsider or to craft a design that would accommodate and remedy some of the, the shortcomings of the, the original proposal. I'm concerned that, um, based on the information provided, um, when I did return and then even this evening, that the issues have not been that the issues have not been remedied. As I run, as I review the recommendation from the staff, it, it's alarming to me to echo Councilmember Page's comments, how many waivers would be required to shoehorn this into this lot. And again, I know that you refer to me as the Parkings are, and I will own that particularly after the meeting with the community regard, regarding the 42nd and 43rd Street. Through, as that conversation developed, it became pretty obvious that the concerns have a domino effect. Not only was 43rd under consideration, but then when we try to remedy it, of course, it moves the, the issue and challenge to 44th and 45th. So I, I continue to believe that Garden City needs to reassess our parking code. And I believe that any compromise on parking is unnecessary and unwarranted and, and does impact the safety of our community. I think that the staff was accurate in their finding number six, the development will not, one of the requirements is the development will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare. And the staff came back and said, the lack of adherence to city codes and the city's comprehensive plan is detrimental to the welfare of the city. I do believe that. And therefore, I would deny this simply based on the parking.
Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment.
Yes, sir.
So I, I had approved this development for, and I, I read the Republican Services and the hammer. I understand it's, that's their preferred, but they're all good options. I think number waivers is concern and then the parking was concern as well. And it was mainly based on kind of the new data that came with the packets that didn't really have time to analyze at the last meeting. And that's kind of the compass information and the level of growth that's going to be happening in this corridor. And so the data is actually from 2019 and it, it shows, you know, quite a bit of traffic from pedestrian vehicles, but more, more I think concerning for me as this relates to the parking and exasperating issues forward is that, you know, per the compass map, that quarter is expected to grow by 2030 by at least 50% by 2040, by 100%. And so, you know, the number of households and traffic that's going to come up on Wood Street and people are going to use that corridor more and more and more to traverse the cities from one end to the other. And, and I rely on, I, I feel compass is a strong organization that worked with them in the past with other organizations. But that is a concern is just the amount of growth projected to happen in the city. And so that's why I'm concerned. So it'd be interesting to understand parking is a pretty big issue and having those on the streets given this data. That'd be, you know, why was that not addressed as a potential modification? When that was clearly a concern with some of the council members. But having that data, it really made me kind of rethink again, the parking aspect of it, just given what this data is saying about what's going to happen in the corridor in the next seven to 12 years.
Hey, further discussion. A hearing now that matters properly before the council. We have a motion on the floor. We're calling roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Let me stop you.
I'm sorry.
The motion is to sustain the decision of the design review committee. Everybody understand? Okay. All right.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes, with some regret.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen? Yes. Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Okay. That effectively denies what you presented. I know that's, yes.
I'm sorry, just a point of order. Before we go into that, can we talk about the findings of fact conclusions, the law and decisions, starting on page 39 of the packet?
Yes.
Is there any wording there that, I mean, is there going to be a motion that this be approved in its entirety regarding all the different findings? Would the council like to change any of the wording or just approve it as proposed?
Okay, I understood the motion to be as it was presented, but is there, do I have that correct, Council President?
Yes, my motion was to, to sustain in its entirety the recommendations of the design review committee. And I think the rationale is clearly spelled out.
Okay. You did make one minor exception on the safety finding for the trash.
But yeah, let me find that.
Just for staff.
Particular citation. I'm sorry, if somebody can point me to that quicker. For myself.
Starts on page 39, Council President.
At the 840.
63. I, I'm being told, Council President, it's on page 63.
Right.
Let's see. Thank you.
78 has the standard conditions of the decision.
Yeah. I have, and I keep going back to this, finding number finding number six. And on the original decision, that was page 11 on council package's decision. That's page 73. And that would strike that finding.
Okay. I think it'd be all right to move to amend his motion to make that declaration, Mr. Waters.
Yes, I, yes, and the decor, I just want to make sure I understand the declaration. So he would, on finding number six there on page 73, he would find that they are in compliance.
With regard to trash?
Yes.
That I do not find it detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare pursuant to testimony received from, written testimony received from Republic Services.
Okay, so we passed a motion to sustain the decision of design review. I think we need a subsequent motion to amend the previous motion to include modification of that one finding.
And Mr. Mayor, as I read this, finding three speaks specifically of trash carts. But the part I wanted to carve out was references to safety. I don't want to make that part of this decision. So with that, I would amend my original motion that we sustain the design review decision along with the findings of fact conclusions of law as, as reported. Cutting out finding six. So with the exception of finding six on page 11, 73 of the council packet.
Councilmember or Council President, on finding number six, just for clarity, you want to eliminate safety regarding trash carts? We don't want to strike it in its entirety because there is a lack of adherence to city codes that prevails the failure to comply to code eight dash four D, correct?
Yeah, so I, I just want to be very, very careful about lumping in public safety in a, in a general term. As it applies to trash, public safety.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not looking for hearsay testimony from a police chief or anyone else. It's, this is just about the trash. I want, I want to lead this to parking.
Correct. Okay, excellent. So as relating to code eight dash four D, which is parking, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What I think we can do, you can present the substitute motion or amended, amend your previous motion. If that passes, then at the next meeting, we'll adopt the actual findings so that we can give staff time to, to connect the dots on any technical changes to the decision documents. That work for everybody?
Yeah, and I just want to be, be clear to staff if, if, if there's any confusion about that, please let me know at this time.
And Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. That does help staff. Just another, I know there's a motion, there's a second, but the other thing, I think I should just make a record of this. Under Lupa, if there's anything that the applicant can do to get, get an approval, I'm sure he'd like to hear it. And under Lupa, the council is required to tell him if there's anything he can do to gain approval.
Well, let me satisfy that requirement. It's exactly what I said at the last meeting. We need, we need parking without any conditions. Make it, make that happen. And, and then this is, that's a project that could pass.
So we're being invited.
Yes, yes. That's one of the reasons, for sure.
Okay. There. We, we do want to give you an avenue to success on this, but we can't prejudge at the same time. So I think the opportunity, if you've listened carefully to the discussion tonight, there is some concern over the number of waivers, just kind of recapping, but specifically strict adherence to the parking standards is, is one that has been mentioned by Councilmember Page, Councilmember Jorgensen, Councilmember Jacobs. And so fix the parking. And I think, you know, you, you've overcome the objection, primary objection I've heard tonight. The fair statement, counsel.
I'm still trying to figure it out.
Well, that's with the staff's not going to work on this anymore. It's your issue to solve. If you can't, you've got to come up with the parking. We, we can't. We're not, we're not going to redesign the subdivision for you or the project for you. We can't do that. So. Okay. Everybody understand? Did we get a second to your substitute motion? Or your modified, your motion to modify the previous motion? Do I get a second to that?
I would second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do you understand the motion, Lisa? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Kirk Colerole.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move now to item G2. This is a public hearing on ordinance 10 and 24 days 22. CPA FY 2022 day 005, Libwork create and design review findings. Mr. Wadons? You're already up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My memorandum on this proposed code amendment starts on page 257 of your packet. It's basically the same memo that's been in front of this body before. I just modified it a little bit to update it with what has been going on. So this memo, by and large, is the memo that was in front of the council previously. I do just want to point out, like I said, on page 259 of my memorandum, that the ordinance needs clear standards for review and approval. Those need to be objective. And if they're not objective, that's subject to remand or reversal in a court of law. I would like to just briefly mention on page 261, I just make a reference to the design review committee and/or the design review consultant. And so I just wanted to clarify that reference to a design review consultant is regarding the second code amendment that we're going to be talking about here this evening. So this code amendment is just for the amendments to the code, the design review standards and what to do with the Suro Mitchell overlay district. And then the second proposal that you'll hear about here in a couple of minutes is to actually change the design review committee to the, to a design review consultant. And I will speak to that in a couple of minutes. I just wanted to reference that in case there's any questions or confusion. On page 263 of your packet in my memo, I, after I explained the law and articulate what overlay districts are and so forth, on page 263, I get into exactly what the proposed changes are for all design review applications. And I would like to take a minute on that. On page 264, your packet, it lists what the required findings are for all design review applications, what the findings are. That's Garden City Code eight, six, B, three, D. A court has found some problems with those seven findings, several in particular. And so that's what we're trying to fix. We're trying to fix these findings that look to be subjective and make them more objective for everybody's benefit. So that's one of the reasons of this amendment, or this proposed amendment. Going through then to, I want to highlight on page 272 of the packet that in my memo, this is when we get into the specific issues of eight dash six, B dash three, D. And again, these, these are the standards that are applicable to all design review applications in Garden City. And so again, a, a court of law took issues with the finding of quote, "security from harm, danger, risk, injury." I'm sorry, that's not, that's not what the standard was. The standard was quote, "protection of health, safety, and general welfare." That was found to be subjective. And so staff has been trying to figure out how to say that in an objective manner. Ultimately, what staff is recommending on that finding is that we just refer to the Merriam-Webster dictionary definition of safety. I think if it's in the dictionary, hopefully it's objective and not subjective. And so what staff is recommending on that finding is that we just follow Merriam-Webster and say that the application must promote safety. And what does safety mean? That is providing security from harm, danger, risk, injury, or loss. Again, staff took that right out of the dictionary. So hopefully the dictionary is objective and not subjective. Another thing that was, there was some issues with were improved the accessibility of development to non-motorized and public modes of transportation. Court of law found that to be subjective. And so we've tried to clean that, clean that up. We've tried to add some definitions to make this more clear. We've added some definitions to safety, like I referenced, definitions for mixed use, work, live, create property. And then we added definitions for archeological sites, excuse me, what the Boise River is, what waterways are, and what wetlands are. So again, hopefully we have clearly defined terms that are objective in this proposal. I go through and explain, you know, talk about some examples from other jurisdictions. I think Meridian has some pretty good objective standards. If we're looking to our neighboring jurisdictions, I think Meridian is a good one to look at. I think Boise is a good one to look at, although Boise is rewriting their, their entire development code right now. So we can look at what Boise has, but it's, it's probably going to change. So that's it for all applications, for all design review applications. But, so that's what the first part of the memorandum is. The second part of the memorandum, though, starting on page 273, talks about what should we do with the Suro Mitchell overlay district. And I know we've all discussed it before. I'm hoping to get some guidance tonight from the council because we have Planning and Zoning Commission, and we have the Design Review Committee. They're recommending that we try to repair this overlay district. And that's one option. And if the council wants to, to do And that's one option. And if the council wants to to do that, then that is option B of the proposed ordinance. However, if the council just wants to repeal the overlay district, that is option A of the ordinance. And so. Staff has been working on option A and option B, and I'm sure staff would appreciate it if we could get a motion tonight. Explaining, should we be working on a repeal or should we be working on a repair of the overlay district? Just by way of a background on the overlay district, my understanding is there's only been two applications on the overlay district. And I don't think either one of them had been built, or maybe one of them was built, neither one of them built, were built. So this is a lot to do about something that's not being used. Again, we're not suggesting that we get rid of the branding or the signage or the maps or anything like that. We're not suggesting getting, getting rid of the branding. But what we're suggesting is, do we need an overlay district that's not being used? That's really the question, and that's a policy question for the council, and I'm hoping. That the council will make a motion on that tonight is, should the repeat, or should the overlay district remain? And we can try to fix it to comply with the court order, or should we just scrap it and rely on the base zoning? And so that's really a policy question for the council here tonight. If the council does want to repair it, then there are some open questions. And I talked about that on page two seventy-three of my memorandum, starting with, should there be a one-to-one ratio, working spaces to living spaces? That was the interpretation of the previous council, even though that's not what the code says. The council interpreted the code to say that there needs to be one. Working space to one living space. And so if the council wants to keep the overlay district, that's a decision that needs to be made. Is that something that the council wants in the overlay district, which would be fair, I suppose? But then if that's what the council wants, then we have to put it right into the ordinance. Another issue is if the council wants to repair the overlay district, then we're going to have to fix the parking standards of the overlay district. The parking standards were specifically called out by Judge Medema. Saying that they're subjective. And so, and either way, we have a parking regulation issue. And I think everybody acknowledges that we have a parking regulation issue. I have it in my memo, and I'll just say it right here, that a parking survey has gone out to all the residents of Garden City. Or has or will. In in either the, your utility bill or some other means. So I understand that the parking survey has gone out. We've had approximately a hundred people respond to that parking survey. So at some point in time, you will hear from your constituents through this survey as to, you know, some, some suggestions on the parking. In the meantime, though, the parking regulations in either the Searl Mitchell overlay district or in the base parking regulations. They could be improved, say they can be improved. And so in terms of policy decisions, then. Do you want different parking regulations in this overlay district if it continues to exist? And exactly what does that look like? One thing that I have in my memo, and I would like to mention it because it's been in the memo for some time. But I've never really specifically called it out. It's at the bottom of page two seventy-four, and it's about shared parking agreements. And I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily asking for a motion, asking for a motion on that tonight. But it's, the question is, is, does the city want to do shared parking agreements? Currently, the code says. Somebody can submit a proposal for shared parking agreements. And what that does is that changes the onsite parking requirements. Is that something that the city wants? Because that's currently what the code says. But the code's not a model of clarity on what the requirements are for shared parking agreements. So I just bring that up now because at some point in time, if it's not in this code amendment, it might have to be in a future code amendment dealing with. Should the city allow shared parking agreements? And if the answer is yes, what are the requirements? Another issue with this overlay district that I think is interesting is that in most jurisdictions, if there's an overlay district, the applicant is. Required to follow the requirements of the overlay district. In Garden City, an applicant can pick or choose. I mean, if somebody wants to. Submit an application and there's a base zone and then there's an overlay on top of it, as it's written, as it's currently interpreted, they could. The, the applicant could say, I want the base zoning. Or the applicant could say, I want the overlay zoning, but it shouldn't be a pick or choose. If somebody's in the overlay district, I would. Recommend anyways, if somebody's in the overlay district, they're stuck with the requirements of the overlay district and they don't get a pick and choose. But that's not the way it's currently interpreted. So that's another issue with the overlay district. So these are big issues for the city. Should the city have overlay districts? Should the city regulate more parking, less parking? Should the parking regulations be different? From the base zone to the overlay zone? These are all policy questions. And I, I really don't have much of a recommendation on those type of things right now, other than the parking survey is in process right now. One of the main issues I see with the parking, though, is if the council is. Feeling like repealing the overlay district, then we have to look at the base park, parking regulations. And I have concerns with those. So if we repeal Searl Mitchell, we need to, as soon as we can, fix the parking regs in the, in the base regulation. So what's all that mean? That means that what I'm going to recommend on this one, and what I'm going to recommend on the other one is that if the council. Wants to look at this, that there be three readings on both of these ordinances, that the first reading be tonight. There also needs to be findings of fact conclusions, a law decision on code amendments. And there's a proposed draft findings of fact conclusions, a law and decision. It's not in your main packet. It's hyperlink to your packet. So hopefully. If you haven't had a chance to look at that hyperlink, we could do the findings of fact conclusions, the law and decision. Either on the second reading or the third reading, if that's the inclination of the council. But in any event, the council at some point in time needs to look at the findings of fact conclusions, law and decision. I would submit that doesn't need to be tonight, but either second reading or a third reading. And then the council staff really would like guidance on whether the council would like to repeal the Searl Mitchell or try to fix it. And if we get that guidance tonight by motion, staff will move forward pursuant to that motion and come back for a second reading and a third reading. With the direction that the council gives us. So with that, I will just say in summary that you have two different proposed ordinances in your packet. And so just for clarity on page three oh five is option A of the ordinance. Option A is to repeal the overlay district. So if that's what the council wants to do, that would be option A. I'd ask for a first reading on option A, starting on page three oh five. If the council wants to repair the overlay district, that is option B of the ordinance that starts on page three nineteen of your packet. And if that is the motion of the council, then I would recommend that the clerk do a first reading of option B, starting on page three nineteen. So tonight, really, I'm just gonna, I'm going to be requesting and recommending a first reading of either option A or option B as the council directs us. And then we take it from there. So with that, I would stand for any questions.
Questions of Mr. Waddams?
Yes, and Mr. Mayor. Mr. Waddams, if, if, if the council were to repeal the, the overlay district. Retain the branding. What in the base code inhibits? Developers going forward in the spirit of the Searl Mitchell overlay?
Well, and Councilmember Heller, that's one of the, that's one of the conundrums, because the base doesn't really address those additional.
But wouldn't, wouldn't a developer have the opportunity to incorporate some of those considerations stipulated by the overlay? In conditional use or waivers or. I'm just trying to get my head around this idea that firstly, we don't have development going forward in any kind of pace in the district. I'm wondering why. But presuming the intention of the, of the district in the first instance was to see that development occur. If it's not a one-to-one basis, whatever the, the pleasure of the council was in particular cases. How is that harmed by keeping the, the overlay name and branding? Returning to the base and allowing for. That, that sort of development on a case-by-case basis.
Well, Councilmember Heller, I do not think it would be.
Thank you.
And I should say, I'm here to stand for questions, but before you're done here, if the staff, Ms. Thornborough, I wanted to just update the council, what happened with the design review and things like that. Some more of the site-specific questions. Those questions. So she's.
Thanks, thanks. Any other questions? And Mr. Waddams?
Mr. Waddams? Is there any legal benefit to retaining the overlay?
Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, I don't know if there's a legal benefit. Legally, six and one half dozen. But I can see how there are some policy considerations. But from a legal standpoint.
Thank you.
There's a question we can maybe discuss a little bit with Ms. Thornborough, but. One of the precipitating issues that created the live-work-create district was Searl Mitchell's property there. And legalizing living. Producing and selling. All on the same piece of property. And I'm not sure what the underlying zone, what kind of alterations would be required to continue that.
To allow that.
To allow that, yes. So. So, so that's kind of how this, this got started. It was. To ensure that that. Property. Could continue hosting. The traveling artists and then they could live there and. Generate their craft. Showcase it there to the public and. And sell, so. So it kind of, you know, over time. Created a, a great opportunity for others potentially in that area to do that. And. Of course, life gets more complicated with time and. Ideas that. Are maybe beyond the. Understanding at the time that that was created, that, you know, we can't see into the future that well. We think we do sometimes, I guess, but. So with that. The Sorbonne. If you would. Let's visit about a couple of those things before. You know, and then I'll have a procedural question to ask either Mr. Waddams and or Sorbonne, or whether we're gonna. Whether we need to, these are noticed up as public hearing items, and so we're, we'll need to hear from the public on both these before we have a substantive discussion from the council on which direction you want to go. So I'll just do that as a preamble to what's next. So. For yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and members of the council. And I, I may just go through briefly what both of the recommending bodies recommended to the council. They both recommended to not repeal the ordinance, but rather. Both of them, the design review a little more pointedly, and certainly the, the planning and zoning commission within the discussion. Noted that they felt that the live-work-create district should be revamped. And have a even further in-depth look than what's currently happening, something beyond the judgment order. To make sure that the, the district is a usable district, perhaps mandatory, perhaps not, but something that could be more. Usable to implement the comprehensive plans, vision for that area that's designated as the live-work-create area. Both of the recommending bodies recommended convening a group of experts and stakeholders to review the code thoroughly. To attempt to achieve. A code that's implementable. In that area. Neither, neither recommending body really had any discussion whatsoever on the findings. And, and I don't believe there's been any testimony on that matter either. It's really been focused on the live-work-create ordinance and. And whether to repeal or not. And I would say that you can read in the discussions. For both bodies that they found that the fixes, while they understood the urgency. Particularly the planning and zoning commission noted that there is an urgency, but recommended that there be a deeper dive. Looking at the ordinance at a later date, and the Design Review Committee actually recommended a continuance until there could be that deeper dive. And. And then. One thing that, based on listening to the discussion already tonight, I would like to point out. The findings within the draft decision document to change the city's code title eight. The, the first finding is to find adherence with the comprehensive plan. And to, to the harm. Question, or if the district could still be implemented without the live-work-create, it certainly could. There's been arguably a lot of applications that are mixed use, and that's getting to the idea of the live-work-create. I believe, having been with the city when that was adopted, that the intent was truly to have somebody that could live and. Work on the same property. And I, I believe that that's where the difference is between a standard mixed-use development and a live-work-create development. And I think that's why you see the. The language that you see, where you see the sharing and the parking, et cetera. Within that. And so the, the potential harm that I could see. By not having a live-work-create is where applicants could certainly. Develop in accordance. And right now, there's not the requirement to redevelop in accordance with the live-work-create, but there isn't a mechanism. To guide the development in that way with a, with the, an ordinance. And, and then I just had a point of order. Tonight is noted for, scheduled for a public hearing. And if there is to be an additional public hearing, if this goes through three readings and say. The third reading is to have an additional public hearing. I don't know if that's the intent or not. Either it would need to be renoticed, or the public hearing would need to be left open to it, the date certain of that date. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Page?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Thornborough. I do, for the benefit of, of the council, we, we have a new council, myself included. I'm the, the old person on council, and I still feel like it's my first day. Can you give us a thirty thousand-foot view of shared parking agreements? What is that exactly as a term of art and what does it mean to our city?
And Mayor Evans, Councilmember Page, a shared parking agreement would essentially be if another piece or another property within. A quarter mile has excess parking, that a development could. Enter into an agreement with that parking to provide parking for the property that's redeveloping.
It follow-up question, then, is that a written agreement? It's memorialized? How, how is the public notified that it's proper to park, park? In this spot and then walk away to another area?
Great question. And Mayor Evans, Councilmember Page. And there are some criteria in code and, and in working with this code. It's not in the code that you're dealing with tonight, but it's in the parking section of code. And I think there are, and that is a section of code that I would recommend that city council look at. Yes, it would need to be a, a signed agreement. And if utilized, I would suggest, and I need to look at the code itself, but staff has been grappling with it, that it needs to be recorded. As well as signage directing individuals. And I can pull up the code and, and discuss what's particularly there. I do know that the, within the walking distant, distance. But it is. Exactly to your point, Council President Page, that. Code only identifies a couple of criteria where it could easily fall apart and people would not know. How to walk. Or where to park.
And I, I, just one more.
Sure.
Again, back to the, so when we're talking about a, a shared parking agreement. Let's say that for the purpose of my hypothetical, that property. A and property B have a shared parking agreement, and there's a distance between the two. Are, are both, are both properties equally burdened? Or is it for the benefit of one at the burden of the other exclusively?
Mayor, Council President.
Mayor, Council President Page. At this point in time, the way that code is written, I would say that only one property's burden, and that is the property providing the parking for the other.
Thank you. I see our city attorney's pulling up a code.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So Jenna, this may be a follow-on to Councilmember Heller's question, but my simple mind, it seems to me confusing for the city and for developers to have a base code, let's not really code, and trying to figure out which one to use and things like that. Is there maybe this is where you're going. Is there any reason why we could roll the use of the overlay into the base code? And it seems to me it'd be much simpler for the city to say this zoning allows these uses, and we include the one-to-one into that uses of these developers can pick whatever use, as long as the use conforms with that zone and and do that, and then just have one base zone that incorporates the one-to-one living. And then and then in terms of keeping up with the flavor of the district, if then you might have a design standard that says this is what we really want this district to look like from a design perspective, an aesthetics of design, what could feel, but incorporate. And so then we have one base use, and then maybe designs edited. I guess I'm, I don't understand the reasoning behind having to.
Mayor Evans, Councilmember Jacobs, I I think that's a great point. I similarly think that a one-to-one use is is a use. It's how somebody is utilizing a particular piece of property for to live and work on that same property instead of having individuals come to work where there are also individuals that live. And and certainly, there could be design standards generated that implement the the comprehensive plans intended designation of the Live Work Create by keeping lots intended to be for smaller businesses, et cetera, instead of large, big box. And then incorporate a one-to-one standard as a use.
So that's thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Yes. And Ms. Thornborough, wouldn't that then reflect in, I I guess, amendment to the the overlay district where, which already, as Mr. Wadams says, allows somebody to to use or or choose base code requirements? So by rolling in the option, I mean, we wind up with essentially the situation we have now without getting into the issue of amendments. So we'd be amending in effect the overlay requirements. Is that correct?
And Mayor, Councilmember Heller, it it depends on how this would be processed through. But certainly, as identified tonight, there there isn't an option that we're speaking to. It's a little bit more hypothetical in that there hasn't been a pulling the the code apart in in such a way. But Garden City Code 82B has a list of uses, and then 82C, depending on what those uses are, have certain criteria. And so there could be a situation where live work becomes a use then that has an 82C that has specific criteria. And then the design thereof of an overall neighborhood, you know, setbacks, landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. That would, that could potentially be another option for the Live Work Create.
Like a design standard.
Like design standards, correct?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Ms. Thornborough, I have a few questions. When when was the overlay originally adopted?
Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, I I can look up an exact date for you.
A year would be fine.
A range of years.
It's a long time.
A long time.
I am going to guess between 2007, 2008.
Okay. And then, as I recall, there's been two applications that leverage the overlay and zero have been developed. So my question is, and I'm going to do a little bit of a preamble. If if we're in the business of running the city efficiently, which I believe we all want to do, and you have limited resources. In my mind, I'm a simple person, so I apologize, but we, I think the the goal should be to make it as simple and as efficient for you and for developers. I think it's confusing, and I think we get reports from those that try to do business and develop work and work with the the city, that there's sometimes frustration, it's delayed, it's prolonged. And so to that end, my my question would be, wouldn't you want to find the most efficient? And so I get a little concerned when I hear the recommendation is to retain the overlay, but then it would require more effort. And it sounds like if you're making a recommendation to, you know, convene a group of experts, it would be a lot more effort. So you help me understand that I'm missing something. What is the value of the overlay to to design and P and Z that I'm missing?
And certainly, Mayor Evans, Councilmember Jorgensen. I I think that it goes back to the comprehensive plan and all of the codes that the city adopts per Title VIII need to be reflective of the comprehensive plan. And certainly, without a doubt, I I do appreciate efficiency. And if you have a code that's reflective of, it's very clear and it's objective versus subjective, as as we've discussed in this process, that does help considerably. And I think the next code amendment that you will hear tonight is also addressing efficiency. And if if code is very clear and developer staff deciding bodies all know what's expected very clearly of them, I do believe that that is more efficient than than if there's any gray. And then the 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 benefit, I would say, is that code, whichever way that you go tonight, I I would recommend, just because it's a finding, moreover than anything, that it adhered to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
So currently, the base zone is in conflict with the complaint. Is that accurate or not?
And Mayor, currently, the comprehensive plan designates that far eastern portion of Garden City as the Live Work Create district, a neighborhood. Currently, the underlying zoning, there's three different zoning designations within that area that's designated by the comprehensive plan. And so is it in direct conflict? I don't know to say that per se. But is it specifically guiding that neighborhood? No, it's it's citywide zoning designations.
Okay, so and this is an if, if the underlying zone added specific use potential with corresponding requirements, like any other used designation. Could that mitigate some of that?
And Mayor, certainly, there could be specific criteria that is designated only for areas east of 37th Street. And and I I would suggest that perhaps this is why the recommending bodies have suggested a deeper dive on on the the ordinance itself. And but there could be mitigating criteria if it's just adopted as a use, that would be a citywide use that would go throughout the entire city, any anywhere, if it's C2C1 mixed use, which are the three zoning designations. If it becomes a design standard, you could do that throughout the city as well and require that of lots of a certain size. There are a number of ways to get there, but I think that's not the the two options that are before you tonight. Option A is to repeal, and then option B is to address specifically what the judgment order requires to be addressed.
You're you're you brought out what the point I was trying to make. If you repeal, I'm not arguing one way or another. If you repeal, you create a standard that's citywide, anywhere there's a common zone designation, whether it's one end or the other. One of the reasons you have an overlay is to create a specific set of standards and uses for an identified restricted area. So in the case of the Live Work Create District, there's a specific area that has the latitude to utilize that use and exercise the criteria associated with that use. Nowhere else in the city can you do that. It's just isolated to that, to the area of the of the district. So so that's that can be confusing. I have mixed feelings about requiring to use those criteria, because not every development situation in that district may be able to achieve highest and best use in the in the Live Work Create criterias. So there may need maybe some parcels that deserve or want to take advantage of the underlying zone. So it can be confusing, and Mr. Wadams makes the point that it preferably in the zone, it's one or the other. But overlays create a different kind of a circumstance. And so I think I'm not sure if if the council went to the repeal option. There certainly could be another use table with criteria to accommodate live work. I don't know where, other than east of Glenwood, that would be feasible. There's not a lot of open opportunities there. So I guess that's a that's that's perhaps a consideration. I don't know for sure how that would work. And I think the specific criteria in the live work, which clearly no one wants to remain status quo. So there's going to be a new if it's repealed, and then we address live work in the underlying zone, or if we retain the district and quote, fix it in some fashion. There's hopefully be clarity either way. But I think one of the policy issues is in addition to what Mr. Wadams has brought up, and what Thornborough has brought to light here is, do you want a section of town that has a specific opportunity to do something that you can't do anywhere else in town? Or do you want to open up whatever it is you want to do to maintain the live work and allow that opportunity everywhere in town? And it's a difficult decision to think through as we're sitting here tonight, because we haven't identified what it would take to modify the live work or or what the actual fix is. We've talked about one-to-one. That might make sense, and one place and might not, somewhere else. I don't know. Depends, and I think that's where the city got a little jammed up with Mr. Wadams project. So anyway, it it I I think we're we're getting close to at least, maybe we should hear from the public. Mr. Wadams has something else to say, but after that, maybe we can hear from the public. The public hearings on these. And then we are going to recommend a three reading process on either way we go. So that we can maybe have a little time to sort some of this stuff out. But and and what we hear tonight in testimony or what comes up will dictate whether we need a second public hearing on these items or not. We need to have one. It could have been doing it tonight. Could have been on the third reading, too. So so, Mr. Wadams, why don't you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted, before Steph sits down, I just wanted to, I had a couple random thoughts. And the first random thought is, you know, I'm not planner. I'm just an attorney. All I really care about is whether something's legal or not. Jenna Thornborough, she is a planner. She looks at things through a different lens. She wants things to look good. I just want things to be legal. So we agree 99.9% of the time. But there's that 1.1% where we respectfully have a healthy discussion with each other. And I say that to set up the issue with committees. I don't think a committee is necessary from a legal standpoint. I think the committee is the planning and zoning commission, the design review committee, the city council, the staff, the attorney. I don't think we need another committee. I've talked to legal colleagues that agree. And and we all know, we've all been on committees. Sometimes committees are great. Sometimes committees add benefits to your analysis. I, you know, I don't, to add another layer, to add another committee, sometimes it becomes burdensome. And I would suggest with all respect that this may be one of those things. And the last part of the thought I had before I sit down is, on overlay districts, typically when you have an overlay district, they make it more restrictive. Right? This one makes it less restrictive, which is kind of the inverse of what overlay typically does. So I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of that. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I have a another question answered by Ms. Thornborough?
Sure.
Absolutely. Ms. Thornborough, as I sit here, I'm mentally making an assumption that it might be correct. So can you guide me on this? Outside of the overlay, so much overlay area, if the overlay, if that overlay did not exist, would its uses be most like mixed use? What what does what base zone would be most like what the overlay offers now?
And Mayor, Council President Page, I would I would have to go through the uses and do a comparison. But off the top of my head, I would agree that likely the mixed use would be the the closest in comparison.
So, Mr. Mayor, follow-up question. If so I'm I'm looking at a zoning map from the Garden City website, so I'm hoping it's updated. I see seven distinct areas of our city that are mixed-use zone. One of them is as far northwest in the city as you can go. Okay, it's right on the edge of Eagle. Someone living in a townhome there. Could they lawfully have a creative studio in their home? Showcase their wares to guests within business hours? Who would it be lawful for a guest to make a purchase or make an order for those goods?
And Mayor, Council, President Page, and yes, depending on all the the details, but to to your point that you're asking is, yes, there is the ability for individuals throughout the city. But to, to your point that you're asking is yes, there is the ability for individuals throughout the city to live and work in the same property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Respectfully, before we move into public testimony, may we take a five minute break?
Absolutely, absolutely. Let's take, let's take a five minute break. Let everybody get a drink of water. Alrighty, let's reconvene the council meeting at 7:52. And we are fast approaching the public hearing component. Was there any other business we needed to do as far as questions of staff? We can always recall them later as well. Okay. Hearing none. We will start with the hearing on public hearing on. Okay, get these right. We can go in order. Option A is, would be the repeal component. Option B would be the repair. So option A would be the ordinance that starts on page 305 in our packet. And is titled ordinance number 1024-22. So with that, I will open the public hearing at this point. We've already heard from staff and Hannah Ball has signed up to testify. Welcome, Ms. Ball. And it's a pleasure to have you, if you would. I can give you your name and address when you're ready for the record and.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Hannah Ball, 215 East 34th Street, Garden City, Idaho. And in listening to some of the comments that were brought up, I wanted to kind of put this thought or theory into your mind. So I'll start with the, when we convened the charrette style for the comprehensive plan. So if you recall, there was a lot of sandwich boards set up and some headlining questions or visions or dreams, so to speak. So I'm very much a dreamer and I like how the comprehensive plan has really inspired me to dig deeper and to think about what people, those people are, are community, what the people want. And I remembered walking in here and there was a group of women that lived in Plantation. And one of the women said, I want to make sure I give comment about the fun part of town. And I thought to myself, I hope she's talking about our neighborhood, but I had no idea. So I kind of followed her around and watched the comments she was giving. And she said, I want to see more food establishments over by 34th Street. So of course I knew she was, the fun end of town was the live work area. So it really kind of inspired me again to dig deeper as a community developer and look at what the people want and try to give them that. And that sounds so taboo, but that's always what I've done in my career. I listen to what the artists want. I listen to what inspires people. I, I listen to what the neighborhood businesses want. And I try to just give them that and not go against the grain, so to speak. So the comprehensive plan has been a huge tool to inspire me. And furthermore, the live work code has inspired all of my designs. Even though I haven't applied it through every development, it's been the toolbox that ultimately has despired everything I've created. It really encourages small scale development and it encourages small business startups, which I think that does make a very fun and quirky and eclectic now part of town. One thing I kind of wanted to point out was size. So when I first started doing development down there, I realized that our size in the live work overlay is very specific and it's very, very small. So the lots are 50 by 150. And the lots are, if you just buy one lot and you wanted to do a PUD, it's too small. You can't make a PUD, a PUD application with a single lot. So that forces you to look at another section of code, apply your base code or go, go buy more land. So historically, I've, I've been fortunate to purchase land, but if I hadn't been able to do some assemblage, I couldn't apply a PUD code. So ultimately I ended up applying a PUD code, which gave me flexibility. But on a 50 by 150 lot, you can really only park four parking spaces. So four on one single 50 by 150, it's, it's going to be small scale in nature unless you go and assemble more land. I do believe that the live work code allows for small scale commercial. It has a pretty, it has a tight height restriction, which I think that low height actually makes for people in the community to say, ah, at least it's not a tall building. So they're, they're generally pleased the fact that it's not 18 stories. So I find that that small scale and keeping that height restriction on all live work developments has made it so the community is generally, there's no conflict of community members when you apply a live work code. It's generally happy, it's creative and it's small scale. So the community is happy when a live work project comes in. And to Charlie's point, there hasn't been many applications. I think it's just the two components. I think it's unclear about parking and it's unclear about the ratio of living to working units. So I, I would ask the council to simply start by installing the one to one ratio of living to working units. I think that solves some conflict. And then just finding a parking code that we could then test and prototype to see if that's a good standard for the live work area. And by doing those two things, I think will reduce conflict and we can even prototype to see if that's a healthy amount of parking that the city would like to see in, in future areas. I also just want to point out the challenges we have in the live work area. So we have major infrastructure challenges. And when I say infrastructure, not the traditional call-in infrastructure, but we have small lots, which are very problematic for developers. We have streets that terminate to a pedestrian connectivity area. And we have the river and then we have the flood plain. So when we talk about those, that to me, that's been a huge, as soon as any developers come into the area and I present them with those challenges, they're like, oh, I don't know how you enjoy developing here. You're so restricted. So in that restrictive aspect, I have to find creative ways to say, yes, but look at our art scene. Look at our future music scene. Look at our culture. Look at our vibrancy. I have to show them how we can really dream big with so many confinements. And I mean, that flood plain, and again, the green belt terminus, it's wonderful to have pedestrian connectivity, but that's also a challenge in its own right because we have pedestrians now spilling over into the, the street, into the community, which is exciting. But now we have to kind of limit or reduce that vehicular trip so that the, the community can live harmoniously. And so parking is, is a discussion, but I think again, our challenge is our, our, our infrastructure, our grid is set up like no other area. So why not take advantage of that and really start prototyping and get creative and really encouraging these projects to continue and not stop? So again, I would just please ask you to consider just introducing a one to one ratio. And I think that this body could definitely fix that parking solution. I think you all have a very unique perspective on parking. And I think this is the right body to just find a solution that works well for everybody on council. And I think the, the parking discussion, I think when it stops here, I think it's going to be very refreshing for the rest of the bodies to say, here is what council wants to see as far as parking in the communities. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Ms. Polly, just, I just have a question because I'm still trying to wrap my head around. Because I like what you heard, you know, you, you made some very valid points and I understand what you're saying about, about some of the uniqueness of the area. But wouldn't that also be addressed if we rolled just those, that the overlay into the use, the base use code? I mean, I, I guess I don't, I, I'm still not grasping why we need to have both. If we, if we make a decision to say, hey, let's just open up and have one base code that allows that use and you'd still be able to do everything that you talked about.
Sure.
And then, you know, and, and point taken on the parking in Charles, which is too, we, we do need to address this kind of an overall park code. And that's in the works for our code discussion. But I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding why, why have both? When we could, we could theoretically create just one set of uses and it's allowed.
So I think the base code, and thank you, thank you for those comments. I think the base code is not, I think the base code, the C two base code works well. I think the problem is what application, if a developer buys one single lot, you're coming down to 34th Street and you're going to buy one lot for development. You want maybe a small commercial in front, maybe you want a couple multifamilies behind. Just you want to lay the lot out the right way. What application do you start with?
Well, that's where, I guess my point is, is if it's allowed use within that code, then you could take
But, but knowing you can't do a PUD, you could do a minor PUD. But again, I don't think it's the use provisions that are in conflict. I think it's really, and it, and it sounds interesting, it comes down to how that lot lays out. I've done studies and I've laid out every single lot. And it's a, it's a real challenge laying out a 50 by 150 lot to make it even somewhat pencil. Right now our single lots are going for 445. And we've seen them up to six, 600,000 per 50 by 150. So that's the highest price per square. And I know this body is like, oh, but that's the highest price per square, almost in Ada County. And so our land trades at some of the, the premiums and then somebody is left to pick up and lay out and please the community and please, please the city with their designs. Instantly without that height restriction, they're going to say, oh, it's easy, large scale. Right? We'll go podium, we'll go 18 stories because then we can make it pencil. Well, then you have neighborhoods that are like, well, can you park it? And is there too much conflict? So a developer's mind says, I can make it pencil because I'll go bigger.
But isn't that allowed in the current base?
It is, and that's where I, yeah, you do.
That's what I'm thinking is that I could come in and use the base code because he can use either the base code or the overlay to decide how we develop. So it's like, well, I'll just use the base code because it's allowed. I'm not forced to use the overlay.
Sure.
So why not combine them into one use? You know, I think when we go through the code modification, we're going to probably look at different, you know, do we want height restrictions to see why? When I was campaign, that was a big issue, right? We want height restrictions, not only in surreal, we want height restrictions everywhere, right? And so those are modifications that we are looking at as our overall code rewrite.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm still having a hard time understanding why we need two separate, why we need to keep the overlay rolling in.
In my opinion, the live work is not that, it's not, it doesn't have a high conflict if those one to one, if the city is satisfied. Right from the city, the community has been satisfied with it. So I think if the city dials in what they would be satisfied as far as rules and regulations, I think it would be a real happy medium. Again, it hasn't been applied a lot, but historically that's because acquisitions is fairly new to that area. I mean, for many years I was, I was, there was no competition when I was doing acquisitions. Now there's a lot more competitions and most developers do come to me to ask me how to lay out single lots. That's the largest question that people come and ask how, what's the best way to lay out a single 50 by 150? So just again, I would say, you know, it's, I think the city can be satisfied. I think it can be a pretty easy win-win as far as the, the one to one and the parking. But I think parking is, again, I know you guys are discussing it. I think it's a, a larger challenge and I know that this body doesn't always think about how a 50 by 150 lays out in parking. It's quite an interesting dynamic. And so you do have your base zone, but you see every applicant come before you and say waiver to parking. You know, can I get around this? And, and they're not just doing it because they're, they don't like the parking. It's because the lots don't lay out.
But I mean, I, I remember one of the, one of the, this is prior to me joining council, but I attended the, the, the meeting where it was approved is, is a development was approved to surreal. It was pretty clear to me that the only reason they used the overlay was to get a parking waiver. And it wasn't really a one to one type thing because they were building a, a expensive, more of a multifamily home. They said, oh yeah, well, they could also have a business in there. But kind of you could tell through the process that really they were just using that simply to get a part. And that to me is not the intent of what that was done, but that was, from my perspective, the intent of why they did that was simply to get waivers. And I don't think that's what we want either.
And I, in the last, I want to say I've documented the last six years straight, haven't seen one project from 36 to the Riverside Hotel not ask for a parking waiver.
Yeah, again, but if people are going to ask for parking waivers anyway, why not have a base code?
And I, and I, I agree in that capacity. I think they do it, they ask for parking waivers just because the size configurations. And now we have, and, and I, I think this body is definitely tracking, but now we're getting some really exciting momentum to the district. You know, Duck Club is going to come do their first annual community music venue. That's going to mirror Tree Fort. And you know, there's going to be a lot of pedestrians coming to the area. And so I, I don't mind the idea of really reducing some of our parking or being strategic about our parking and having a, an atmosphere that has pedestrian and cycle focused because we have that wonderful green belt. And so of course I would love the vision and the focus to shift from, let's be more proactively thinking about how the green belt, how additional pathways can be created, how green belts can be widened, how, you know, really forward thinking, what's the improvements that need to take place on the green belt to really start accommodating the pedestrian traffic that I think is just going to be a, an issue.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much. No, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Ball? Great, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Jones. Welcome, if you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Jason Jones, 208 East 33rd Street, Garden City, Idaho. So just kind of listening to all the conversation, obviously there's a lot of questions about whether it should be repealed or whether there should be some updates. And I, I think as I listened to all the questions, I think the one thing I noticed is that while I don't necessarily disagree with the responses, I think I have a totally different take from everybody, even Hannah. You know, as she talked about, like, do we want the one to one ratio? I think, you know, one of the things that's come up is that the Sorel Mitchell live work create overlay is not getting used. And as somebody who designed a project to meet the code and then that project got denied, I think I can speak to one reason why it hasn't been used. And I think some of that is, as Hannah said, the area really only has started to be an area of development in the last few years. So even though the code came in in 2007, we all know what happened very promptly right after that. And so there wasn't a lot of development in that area. You know, maybe there was going to be some development, but we had a, a real estate bust. And Boise was hit pretty hard by that. And so for a long time, that just kind of was under the radar and nothing ever happened. And then as we did have some development coming into that neighborhood, like I said, the only project that tried to use that was denied. And so I think that's part of the reason some of the other projects that have come into the neighborhood since then, didn't use the live work. Because it was unclear what the actual regulations would be. Because like one of the things that was there was a one to one ratio. And you've got to understand that to design an entire project that is a one to one ratio of living and working is a challenge. So I think Hannah lives in a neighborhood that I would say is a live work neighborhood, but it is not at a one to one ratio. The homes along 36th Street all have workspaces. But the homes behind it that are part of the subdivision don't have workspaces. And so if you allow that to be a live work project, they would submit under the live work. But because it wouldn't be a one to one ratio, they couldn't do it. Just on my street, since my project was approved, we've had another project that I believe is a live work project. It's actually got two small commercial spaces on the front that could be two little businesses or art studios. And it's got four residential spaces. And so it's quite possible that somebody who would buy that project would buy it so they could have their art studio in the front. But once again, it couldn't, at least up to this point when it was submitted, it was before the judge's order. At that time, they couldn't submit it as a live work because they thought they had to be a one to one ratio. And so it would be a very challenging thing for them to go, okay, we had four units here, but now we're going to bring it down to two so that we have the same number. And again, that really is a live work project. I know I just saw a pre-application this past month for what I believe is another live work project, but it's not submitted under the live work because it's too tall. So when you kind of look at, in my mind, if we were going to, you know, one, I want to start by saying there's no real reason to repeal the live work. The judge's order very clearly identified one single piece of line in the live work code that is basically contrary to the local land use planning act. That one line, I think I could even pull it out for you, but maybe Charlie could check. It was simply a parking code line that basically said the planning official could decide the parking if necessary. And that's the only section of code that the judge said has to come out of the live work. That arbitrary is not allowed by the local land use planning. The other things that are trying to be changed right now, the one to one, that's not by the judge's order. It's only if you want to apply a one to one ratio that you need to change it. But if you don't want to apply that ratio right now, or if, like I said, if we haven't had enough discussions or if we want to have workshops, we could still have those workshops to talk about why we either, you know, Hannah says she wants the one to one. I think it's a mistake. I think it'll make it used even less uh, than it already is. Um, but I think that's a discussion that should probably be had at workshops with the actual people who live in the area. Uh, like I said, we could actually fix the live work code with just one cross out of one line of code and then it would be fixed. Now, the problem is that same line of code is the city's current commercial parking code. That is the whole entire city's commercial parking code. So why we're so worried to fix just the live work and somehow repeal it when the entire commercial parking code of the entire city is that line of code from the live work that the judge wanted crossed out. So we should probably take a moment and think about that because once we repeal the live work, now all of the commercial parking code is broken. Because that is exactly the same way the whole entire commercial park code deals with parking. And so we can actually fix the live work whilst working, I think, because I know Jenna has said she's working behind the scenes to actually maybe create commercial parking code, I believe. Because that commercial parking code is also broken. So to me, and, and maybe Charlie, you can comment here to kind of confirm what I'm saying is true. And so to me, it's like crazy that we're, you know, I, I know, um, uh, Councilmember Jorgensen just was like, hey, what's the easiest way to do what we're doing here? The easiest way would be to cross out that line. Go ahead and just fix the live work code that way. And then let's have the discussions about how we think we can make the live work code useful. Because I think my issue is that if it gets repealed, I don't see a, a strong favorable reaction to actually going back and creating it within the other code, if that's the solution, uh, that Councilmember Jacobs has suggested. It's, that's something that's going to be years away before it actually gets fixed. And in the meantime, you know, I know there's a question about like, are people using the live work? I think people are, but only indirectly because like I said, there's been a lot of issues with it because there was uncertainty because the only project that had used it was denied. So we created the uncertainty in the code and then we're going, hey, nobody ever uses this. Well, sure, nobody uses it now, but there is a chance for us to actually fix it. We can fix the legal stuff, which I think should be done right away. But at the same time, I don't see what the hurry is if it's actually the same with the regular code. Until you have a regular commercial parking code, you're still totally illegal. If you repeal the live work, the live work actually has sections of code for parking that are legal and they're actually commercial sections that are legal for those workspaces. It just had an additional section that the judge said, hey, that's got to go. Which is what our other parking code is entirely made of. So I just want to point that out and make sure that's really clear. And so I think, like I said, we should just cross that line out. We should go ahead, update that code, and then we should immediately, maybe today, put together some sort of workshop so that actual people who live in the area can come in, make comments about really why, because like I said, in this short time, I don't believe I can really express, like I said, as I heard all the questions and answers, I think I had a different take and perspective on every single question that was asked today. Every single answer given, I think I looked at them differently. And I think, like I said, I, I believe that some of what we're proposing to do, like, like I said, I don't have time to go into all of it, but with the design review stuff, I think we're really off. I don't think that's what the judge actually meant we needed to do. And I think we've taken it a little crazy. And I think it would be great if we just had a sit down and went, hey, what do we really need to update here? And, and how much needs to actually change to fix, one, on the legal side, what needs to be fixed? And then two, how can we actually make the live work a place that everybody wants to live and work? Because I do think there really is the potential of doing that and to actually get that code to be useful. So I know Councilmember Jacobs, your question is kind of like, how can that be useful? And I really think that it is possible to be useful, but we have to look at one, why projects don't use it. And I see lots of projects that don't use it for a variety of reasons. And I think all of those are very fixable. And I think those should be addressed before we try to move forward to change significant portions of it. Like I said, I think we can fix the legal with one line. And then we could actually address a fix that would actually make it usable. So I'll stand for questions.
Great. Thank you. Questions, Mr. Jones?
Yes, ma'am. Just had a quick question. So to clarify, you want to repair?
Sure.
And then repair again?
I mean, I would say, because I think the initial repair that the judge has actually ordered is simply the removal of a single line of code. And I can even read the line to you if you want.
No, I, I don't need that. But what I understand is your proposal would repair, but then we're going to have to repair it again.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really think if two and a half months ago, when we started talking about this, we'd put together some sort of work session, we might already be at the point where we could say, hey, look, all we really need to do is increase the height by fifteen feet. And you might actually have projects coming in as live work projects in the live work neighborhood. Because really what's happened is the live work code was written in two thousand and seven. This underlying base code was actually updated later that allowed for some taller buildings. And of course, if somebody's looking at building something, they're going to go, hey, if I can go fifty five feet instead of forty five feet, am I going to do that? And the answer is yes. And so the real question is, did the live work, does having a live work project, does it make sense to restrict that project to thirty five feet when the neighbor can be seventy five feet?
So would you, to kind of Charlie's point, one of the problems you have is you have in most cases, the overlay is the stricter code. And usually it's circumvents the base code. Would you be more in favor of eliminating the base code and only have that's the word live work code, code specific to that area only that doesn't allow any base code uses?
I mean, I think I'm with the mayor on this. I think flexibility is kind of the real key because you, you obviously have, what? The, the area of the live work is that entire area from the Riverside, basically down to Thirty Seventh Street. Uh, on both sides. And so the truth is like Western Collective was never going to be a live work project.
Right.
And so it doesn't make sense to be like, ah, you've got to find a way to have some people living here, Western Collective. I mean, that obviously isn't what the live work was meant to do. I think, I think the other thing that's maybe been missed is that the live work code not only allows living and working, which is allowed in other mixed use areas, but it actually changes the dynamic of how that looks because it allowed living spaces and workspaces to be smaller. And, and that's one thing I think we're not looking at. It actually allows, like, we're going to have a discussion after this about tiny homes. But the live work code, part of the reason that I bought property in the live work is because I'm here because I like tiny homes and smaller stuff. It allows homes as small as two hundred and twenty square feet. And that in itself is something that it, it's hard to replicate, right? You know, you can go back to the base code and say, but I think the other thing I see is that it's a special area. I mean, I know Cyril's place and the directors of Cyril's place, really, they haven't wanted that to expand because they want that area to be unique to Garden City. They want it to have its own identity. And so even though they're not here speaking today, I know they have that on the record already previously. But I think that it's this idea that, okay, just working in your home isn't all that that code does. Like I said, that code creates smaller spaces. It creates in my mind like a uniqueness to what you can actually have. So it meant I could have a little tiny shop on my property and then have a little retail space out front. But once again, we kind of, by having a one to one ratio and the way we're trying to word this new code, we've made it more complicated than I think it even needs to be. Because I'd never believed that that code meant one to one. I think it kind of meant like, hey, if you had your little house on this property and you had a, let's say a metal working shop in the back, you could also put a little retail space out front and you could have these workspaces where you did stuff on your property and you lived and worked there. I mean, that was always the intent. And now we're saying, nope, if you have the metal shop in the back, you can't have the retail space up front because now you would have two workspaces. And you only have one house. I mean, again, I think that's never what it was meant to say. This council decided that was what it was meant to say, but it didn't say it. And that's why the judge has said, hey, if you want to enforce that, you've got to put it in the code. But I'm not sure like Hannah, that we should enforce it. I think it actually takes away from what the live work was always meant to be, which was like a place that encouraged the smaller startup businesses. Like if you look and read the purpose of the live work code, you'll see that it's supposed to support small startup entrepreneurial businesses. And that's what I'd hope we would get to, you know, by allowing it. I think we'll actually see some smaller entrepreneurial businesses come in now that now that we've kind of, there, there's been a, a judgment and now everybody knows what it says. I think we're going to see smaller startup businesses, but by the city bringing this forward and looking like they might repeal it, you kind of got everybody waiting to.
All right. Thank you, Jason.
Yep. Other questions?
Other questions? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we have some online participants. Uh, if anyone online would like to participate in the public hearing, uh, use your, raise your hand function on the Zoom. We have one, yes. Uh, all I see is the name, is that Don?
Don, correct.
Don, if you would identify yourself, uh, we'll take your testimony.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Donald May, one twenty East Forty First Street. Uh, Mayor, Council, President Page, thank you very much for your time. I'll be brief. Uh, I'm in support, uh, as usual, of less parking regulations uh, in managing parking via parking meters and neighborhood parking permits. Having both neighborhood parking permits and parking meters, both of those, when used in combination, ensures developer do, developers do not abuse the development code and ensures that their residents, if they have the residents we're talking about here, are actually properly parked. That's really important. Uh, having said that, I would also respectfully like to ask that the survey results that were recently done by Garden City be released to the public. So we can all see what the public desires. Be very interested to, to what the pulse of the community is right now when it comes to parking. Uh, Garden City's parking needs are growing and changing, and we need to grow and change and adapt to it. And to address these parking problems, I really believe we should look to other cities to see what they have done to solve their, their parking problems. Um, even massive cities like New York City have figured out how to manage their parking. Uh, luckily, it's a tried and tested method that's been used throughout the world for close to a century now. And then we're talking, of course, about parking meters. Uh, when you price these parking meters to the right number, and it does vary based on where you are in the, in the city and the block, uh, they can do very dramatically just by one block and limited to the right time limits. Again, time limits can be varied quite a bit significantly too, depending on where you are in this little micro geography. Um, if you do that so that there's always twenty percent availability approximately, you're going to have, um, you know, a really nice uh, management system of the parking. Again, this has been done time and time again throughout the world. As far as live work goes, I strongly support live work. The world since the pandemic, as we all know, has rapidly changed how we work. Uh, we both work from home now, uh, and people live and work from the same place now more than ever. Uh, it would be great for Garden City to be on the leading edge of these changes. And I think we should be more flexible uh, with developers to lead to these creative solutions. Um, thank you so much for your time. And, uh, I guess if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. I doubt it, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. Are there questions of Mr. May? Hearing none. Uh, thank you. Uh, I'm presuming you'd like to be on our interested party list. If you would make sure you communicate, uh, by email with our Development Services Department. So you, uh, get any correspondence related to this.
I sure would. Thank you so much, Mayor.
You're, you're welcome. Uh, anyone else online that wishes to testify? Or on the Zoom? Okay, I don't see any. While I'm on the interested party topic, uh, Mr. Jones, I presume I could check, yes, that you want to make be an interested party?
For the mailing updates.
Yes. So I'm, I mark that, I mark that for you. Uh, okay. So, uh, we've, we've, this, uh, this, uh, public comment, uh, has really touched on repeal uh, and touched on um, repair, if I can use those two class classifications. Let me just quickly run up here to page three nineteen. Uh, both of these are under the same, uh, ordinance number ten twenty four dash twenty two. So Mr. Waddams, I think we've accomplished the public hearing on both versions. Can I say it that way?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think we have.
Okay. All right. Before I, uh, close the hearing portion and turn it to the council for discussion, the, regardless of what the council does, we're recommending a three reading process to allow for some fluidity in how this ends up playing out, uh, over the next couple of meetings. So with that, uh, let the record reflect that everyone that wishes to testify uh, both in person and on the Zoom call have had an opportunity to do so. And with that, I'll close the public hearing and turn it to the council for uh, the deliberative process. Lot of had a great discussion. Appreciate the testimony. There's uh, lots of stuff to consider here.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll start.
Yes, no.
Have any objections to that?
No, no. You have the floor.
Uh, I think earlier in testimony or things I've said, it's one thing that's important to me is, uh, not making postmortem changes to someone's legacy. Uh, and and I'm not sure what Cyril would say if, if, uh, she was with us at this, today and and I think there would be some level of disappointment that, you know, this has become complicated and acrimonious. For reasons of legislative ease and lack of, uh, additional demands on our, on our staff, does seem that to me that the easiest solution is option B. That is easier, I think. Um, it has one less cog in the wheel. I believe being creative with our base zone, the intent of Cyril Mitchell can be, can be met. I don't, um, think that there, I think we should do something to honor the branding that's there and the identity that people have with living there. It's not lost on me, Mr. Jones' testimony about moving there, uh, specifically because of that you know, overlay and what it meant to you. And I, we've heard testimony from the directors of Cyril's place that, that that's important as well. Those are, those are my thoughts. I don't, uh, wish to talk more than, than that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, Council President, uh, for clarity, are you advocating for a repeal or repair? You referenced option B, which would be a repair.
I'm sorry, uh, I, I did say that. I did not mean that.
Okay.
Yeah, I I I just think it's it's easier and and easier means less problems down the road to to have less complication. So that in my mind is option A. Thank you for.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I I want to add a little bit to President Council's comments. I also lean heavily toward option A. There's a I I would like for some clarification, however, Mr. Jones made an argument that perhaps we've overthought and overcomplicated as a reaction to the judge's order. Is is that, Mr. Waddams, your opinion, or is do you remain firm in your opinion that we we have some need to actually fix?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, I think Mr. Jones basically was correct on all of the statements. Some of the problems that the judge had was not with the overlay district, but with the design review findings that apply to everything. So the judge had some problems with the design review findings that applied to everything, and he also had a few limited problems with the overlay district. The problems that he had with the overlay district is the council said that there's a one to one ratio. The judge said, well, that's great, but it's not your code. And we had our consultant that said that the legislative intent was a one to one ratio. We had staff that said it was a one to one ratio. All that's great. Our code did not say that. So the judge simply said, you know, Garden City, if you want it to be a one to one ratio, just put it in your code. So that's something. So if you want, if the council wants a one to one ratio in the overlay district, we would have to add that into the code. And then the other, Mr. Jones is correct, the judge had an issue with our parking regs in the overlay district. He would have the same problems in the base zoning regs, similar problems. But his main problem was it did not mention a one to one ratio in the code. And he thought the parking regulations referencing a planning and zoning commission, planning and zoning commission doesn't even look at these applications. And then he and then he had a little confusion about what the words meant. So he said, if you want the one to one, put it in there, clean up your parking regs in your overlay district, and the planning and zoning commission should not be involved because the planning and zoning commission is not involved. So, I mean, Mr. Joe, I don't disagree really with anything that Mr. Jones said from the legal standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Waddams. So I do want to share some of my thought process here. As is likely not a surprise, whenever I'm faced with, you know, an option of repair or repeal or, you know, clean it, clean it up, make it easy. I like to find a method to make it as clean as possible. And so although the overlay could be cleaned up with a single cross out, there's an awful lot of words that would remain, right? And with that many words in existence, there's liability there in my work. And so and further, you know, 15 years, I believe, is a long enough time to prove out the value of of code. And despite the fact that oh seven was a downturn, I, you know, we haven't been in a downturn for 15 years. We've had certainly had cycles. So there's been an opportunity to leverage the value, if there is value. Now, I also agree with President of the Council that there's a lot of value to the name and to honoring and respecting the purpose and the intent behind designating the the area. However, again, I I don't, I I haven't been convinced of a true tangible value of this overlay. And so my inclination would be to vote for option A, repeal this and find a way in our base code. And I, everybody is on board and accelerating the need to fix our parking regs. That's hitting the top priority. So having said that, I I just wanted to conclude that I respect the Searle Mitchell district. I want to honor that. But again, I believe if we go back to base code, the the entities and particularly the city council, we have the tools and and ability to approve exceptions and allow unique and interesting and creative developments where where necessary. So I believe that we don't actually strip any rights away by repealing the overlay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of comments.
Yes.
And so I I'm kind of conflicted because I the the points that both of you made were very good. But I I I'm kind of in favor of having one code, one use, and then allow it increase the expand the the use to include some of the things that the overlay has because I because I like it. The concern about the repair is it kind of to your, I guess, my question to you, Jason, is like, well, let's repair it, and then we have to repair it again. And I don't know if there's even agreement on what the repair is. Hannah wanted the one for one. Jason wasn't in favor of the one for one. And so that's like, okay, what do we repair to? Where are we going to keep chasing repairs to try to narrow this thing down to what it really should be and have and have committees? Or it would be better to repeal it potentially and then bring those people together and then say, okay, what what do we want to add to the base code that allows all the uses that we want to do? And so that when the developer comes in, it's like, these are the uses that allow in the area, and it includes some of the things that are there today. And we've beat the parking horse pretty pretty dead. And so there's expediency, I think, on all the council members that look at the code. I asked, I asked Travis, and how long would it take us to maybe roll in the the live work create code into the base code? And he goes, well, probably a six month process. We ask, you know, expedite it in versus years. I think was your concern, Jason, that I think we're trying to get the parking done just as quickly. And so those are kind of my, that's it. I just feel like we'd be chasing repairs. And so and then I'm in favor of design standards. So then that's where we bring the community together, what we want those design standards to be. And they conclude include height restrictions, what it looks like, you know, so it keeps that flavor of the memory.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, counsel, Mr. Waddams asked for a decision on repeal or repair tonight. I'm going to encourage you to make that so we can get on with this. Again, we're looking at a three reading process. And we'll get a direction hopefully here in a few minutes. Since both these ordinances have the same ordinance number, a motion to read the ordinance for the first reading would need to include, would that be option A or option B?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's my request.
I see, okay. Okay. So matters properly before the council. If there's no further discussion, someone can make a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Point of clarity?
Yes.
So I believe there would be a motion to adopt the ordinance and then and a motion for the first reading. Is that correct?
Or no, the motion would simply be to request the clerk read it for the first reading. So there's no adoption until the third reading. So the three reading process allows things to happen, frankly. And additional things that potentially could influence the council's final decision, which would be after the third reading.
Could take place, okay, during that process, so.
Yeah, so by by ordering the reading for the first or by a motion to have the clerk read it for the first reading, it's is signaling an intent to adopt it adopted subject over time to other information or circumstances that might influence a different outcome.
And the public would be able to give us initial feedback?
Well, we can, we're required to have one public hearing, which we've had tonight, doesn't mean we can't have another one. So so we'll kind of cross that bridge down the road here, but there'll be some parallel discussions and effort on some of the discussion we've had tonight on the mechanics of complying with the councils that wish to incorporate areas of latitude in the live work, current live work district into our base code. And I think we owe the council some some input on kind of the mechanics of that and any implications that would have that we haven't discussed tonight. So that's kind of a parallel track that we would go if this if the council proceeds with the repeal option. And that three reading process gives us some time to you know, to address some of those things, anticipating some perhaps additional questions on.
It's not a final decision.
Tonight is not a.
It's just approval of the reading.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Further clarity?
Yes.
Can the reading be by title only?
Absolutely, I would recommend it or we'll be we'll be serving Hannah will have to go do this breakfast.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move for its first reading that Madam Clark read option A of ordinance number 1024-22 by title only.
Second. Got a motion and a second, we need discussion. Hearing now the clerk call the role.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Option A of ordinance number 102422, an ordinance of the City of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending or repealing Garden City Code Title 8 Development Code, Chapter 1, General Regulations, Article A, Purpose, Applicability and Interpretation, Section 4, Applicability, Chapter 3, Overlay, Zoning District Regulations, Article A, General Provisions, Section 1, Zoning Districts, Established, Section 3, Allowed Uses, Article C, Searle Mitchell, Work, Live, Create, Chapter 6, Administration, Article B, Specific Provisions, Section 3, Design Review Committee, Section 8, Minor Planned Unit Development, Section C, Allowed Uses, and Chapter 7, References, Article A, Definitions, Section 2, Definitions of Terms, Repealing Ordinance Number 867-07 in Its Entirety, Repealing All Ordinances or Part Thereof to the Extent They Conflict With This Ordinance, Providing All Other Ordinances Including in the Official Code Are Still in Effect Notwithstanding Some Provisions Thereof Being Eliminated, Repealing Any Other Official City Action Creating or Regulating the Searle Mitchell Live, Work, Live, Create, Overlay Zoning District, Providing Perseverability, Approving a Summary of the Ordinance and Providing an Effective Date.
Great, thank you. We'll now move to item G3. This is also a public hearing on ordinance 1026-22. This is on page 331 in our packet. Mr. Waddams has provided a comments in the packet. I think there's some I think this warrants some background discussion. Jenna, can you join at the podium too with Mr. Waddams? Ms. Thornborough?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what I would propose is I give the legal presentation and then Jenna can get the the presentation.
Yeah, I I think that's great. I just I just, since I was one of the motivators to take a look at this, I thought I'd just maybe give just a little bit of background. Over the course of the time that we've had the current mechanism for design review, we've had a lot of successes. I think there are examples of those successes around town. We've had compliments from applicants on ending up with a better project. We've been fortunate to have a good qualified professional representation on that committee with very thorough knowledge of our code with design related backgrounds or planning backgrounds. Keeping qualified members on that committee is something that has concerned me over time. More aggression is is gone. This is a very time consuming function. So that's kind of one side of of the equation. The other side, from the applicant side and from the public side, right, added a whole other layer of public hearings. And the original intent, when we entered into the design review function, was to assist the applicant in the interpretation and application of our code. And to help with some you know, take advantage of the experience of the design review members in project development. But that is morphed over time into a forum that, in my opinion, ultimately needs to push up the chain to either the planning and zoning commission or the city council. But the designer review function is very valuable. One other aspect, particularly from the public, and I've heard from this, is gee whiz, I've got to go to three public hearings at least to express my concerns or my support for a particular project over an extended period of time sometimes. So for those reasons, and of course, the impact on volunteer design review board members, these meetings last three hours or more routinely. And we're really pushing the envelope. And now we're down to two members and you don't find these folks. I can't call job services and have a qualified design review member show up to volunteer to go through this function. So what we're looking at tonight, and Charlie and Jenna can give their perspectives. My interest has been that we treat the design review function like we treat the engineering function. We need a qualified, some qualified expertise to advise or review for an application. And that review can be included in the packet that goes to Plan Zoning Commission or city council. So we're not eliminating that. We can also tailor it to specific application types if we have specific times that types of review we want to have. For example, if a project has along the river has contemplates changes in vegetation or we may need some landscape expertise for a review. I don't know what plants are native to to some section. I don't know whether you should plant a tree A in what proximity to a building, because of how big it's going to get and all that kind of stuff. So there's some there's some latitude we have in how we get the information for the decision making body to review. On the engineering side, we make sure that the sewer plans are approved and we have reports on on ensuring that subdivision code is met with setbacks from intersections and, you know, just all kinds of that technical stuff. So this, if the council is favorably disposed, this, the reason I'm bringing this is I think it would simplify our process, it would reduce the number of public hearings our staff has to prepare for. It would give the staff the latitude to tailor, review. to projects if that becomes an issue because of some technical issues that might come with a specific project. And for the public, it would reduce the number of times they need to come and applicants reduce the number of decision-making appearances they need to have. So with that background, Mr. Waddams, would you go ahead and introduce this from your perspective and then we'll have Ms. Thornborough?
Well, Mr. Mayor, you made my whole staff report. I appreciate because you could say it better than I could. So I will just be brief. Like the mayor said, my reports, the legal memos on page 331, it's relatively short. After that, Ms. Thornborough's staff reports on page 333. After that, the proposed code amendment is in here as well. That's on page 355. The recommending body or the decision from Design Review Committee is then on 398. There is proposed findings of pack conclusions of law and a decision that are hyperlinked. If you haven't had a chance to look at those tonight, we could take that up either on the second reading or the third reading. But the mayor expressed the purpose and the attempts very well, minimize the necessity for multiple public meetings to, you know, reduce the time for staff to reduce the time for the volunteers. And so really all point to is really one thing, and what I should say first of all, is I need to apologize to the clerk for the title because this is one of the longest titles I've ever seen, but I want to explain why. Because Design Review Committee is sprinkled throughout Title 8. So for us to get rid of Design Review Committee throughout Title 8, we have to list all the things that are being repealed. And it's going to be a mouthful for Ms. Libby if the council wants the first reading. I do apologize for that. That is the reason. There is a little flow chart in Ms. Thornborough's staff reports on page 341. I would just say look at this little flow chart on the bottom of page 341. That's the proposed process that we are suggesting changing the Design Review Committee to a Design Review Consultant. They'd be on contract. The additional expense would be a pass-through and recoup that expense from the applicant. And so it's basically changing the whole structure. One thing that I thought, I've always thought is interesting is that the Design Review Committee is the final decision-maker on some things. Our proposal here changes that. The Design Review Consultant would not be the final decision-maker of anything. All he or she would be doing, or they, he, she, or they, depending on the situation, they would be making recommendations, recommendations only. It would be an interactive process between the consultants and the applicant, not needing a public meeting because there's only one person making a recommendation. So open meeting laws do not apply. So if you take care of the open meeting issue, we take care of the multiple public hearing issues, and we just follow this process on 341. The proposal is that consultant or consultants make a recommendation to Ms. Thornborough. Ms. Thornborough is the final decision-maker on design review applications. If somebody doesn't like what Ms. Thornborough does, they can appeal to the council, and the council can also sue a spontaneity, bring things up or take a thing, let things on their own volition. So that's it in a nutshell. I'm going to ask for three readings. I'm just going to ask for the first reading tonight. I apologize for Ms. Libby for the length of the title. And that's my legal report that I will submit to Ms. Thornborough unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Everybody's taking everybody's report, so it was a great introduction. One thing that hasn't specifically been talked about, but I would like to echo what the mayor has said about the current Design Review Committee and its predecessors. Certainly, the gentleman, as Ms. Gresham most recently fits in this category as well, they're very competent, they're very thoughtful, and they endeavor to uphold the city's best interests and certainly the City Council, where they will specifically ask staff for updates if there's any changes to the decisions that have been made as they come through the council, and they will keep those in mind as they make their future recommendations or decisions. And as the mayor noted, they would remain in place and continue to be the experts advising staff in this instance on projects that go through the city. So I think that they understand that this is not intended to be a slight to them, but truly to create a more efficient process. As Mr. Waddams pointed out, there is the flow chart that discusses the process that's foreseen with this application process, very similar to what's currently in place. I might note that applications would be required to have a neighborhood meeting ahead of time so that they could meet with their neighborhood. And then anybody who submits anything in writing would then have standing to trigger a public hearing, as well as those written comments would be incorporated for the consultants to review as they review the application. And the reason for that is often you will hear people that just have questions come and sit down at those meetings, or it may be something as simple as they're showing a window right here that's going to look into my backyard. And then the current Design Review Committee will say, well, can you do a taller non-view window? And then the problem solved. And so there will still be the ability for the public to interact, but in a written format. When this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission really thought it was important to keep the integrity of the work session and not allow oral public testimony because that does end up turning more into a public hearing and might take things off, off track. And so the, the Planning and Zoning Commission had noted in their work session that they highly suggest that it remain in written comment format. Based on the current draft of this application, both of the recommending bodies did recommend a favorable passing of this ordinance. The Design Review Committee just wanted to make very clear that there could be one or more consultants and that the staff would have a policy to be able to have the flexibility to be able to know when, what type of consultant would be engaged. For example, the mayor had mentioned if there is a river expert that might be able to interact with and be able to help an application adjacent to the river. The other note that the Design Review Committee wanted to make sure was in policy, not necessarily the ordinance, was that there be the ability that the applicant receive their comments prior to a consultation. And that would be more efficient for the applicant, and then they could already incorporate those comments as well as more efficient for the consultants themselves to not have premature meetings. Again, they thought that the ordinance was drafted in such a way that there was that flexibility, and they did not want the ordinance to be so rigid that it's dictating who meets with who when, but that be in the policy portion that's alluded to within the ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission wanted to make sure that the policy were, right now it says written comment creates standing would include email. And again, that would be in a policy versus necessarily an ordinance. And they wanted to also clarify the language that those wishing to have standing must submit in written format. And that is more looking to the staff report, and that is in the current ordinance. And finally, the Planning and Zoning Commission really wanted to make sure that in matters of design review, if there is a component that also goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that the design review component is taken care of first. So that might be an example where it's new construction of something that would require a conditional use permit, that they wanted to make sure that that design review component had been addressed prior to the public hearing for the conditional use permit. And there's a question related to fees currently in the current fee schedule that was adopted some time ago. The fees that are charged for the city is just a design review application. So there's probably flexibility there to utilize that fee. And then just one note, Mr. Waddams has recommended that this be read three times. And Ms. Joanne Butler did write to me this weekend noting that the specific area plan also has a reference to the Design Review Committee that we may have missed in the ordinance. And so that will need to be changed to consultants as well in that section of code. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions? Yes.
I just have two questions. The first is, you mentioned that we probably have multiple consultants in your example, the river. Do we have a network of consultants now, or is that something we're going to have to go and look for quickly?
And Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, we do have two current members. Both of those members have suggested multiple times, as well as Ms. Gresham, that somebody with expertise in landscaping is somebody that they recommend that the city engage. And staff has reached out for the current open position to a number of individuals with landscaping expertise. And perhaps this process may make it easier for somebody to engage where it may not be needed at every application, and then there would be a stipend involved.
And then my second question was more on, I didn't see it, so maybe I may have just missed it on timing. So you know, if Jaser Hannah wanted to propose something to the Designer View, under the current thing, has a set meeting day. How do these consultants have a service level agreement on how fast they have to respond and meet so that it actually is streamlined and they're not potentially waiting longer?
And Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, at this point in time, there is a draft agreement that is anticipated to be in your next packet, but I don't believe the timeframes are addressed within, and within that agreement. Mr. Waddams can correct me if I'm incorrect on that. I would anticipate that there's some flexibility because we're not adherent to the public hearing noticing where we may be more flexible to be able to meet. However, right now with current staffing constraints, meeting every two weeks is probably the capacity that I would recommend that the staff try to keep up with because every meeting that you add and try to have things ready, you would have an additional
I was just more on the availability of the consultants because it's, it's when they're available. If they say, well, you know, I'm not available, I'm not available, we've created the same problems from a scheduling perspective. So I would just hope that there's some service level agreements that specifies time that we, if they're getting a stipend, if they're notified, they have so many weekdays to meet with the applicant.
Certainly. And thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Jacobs. I do see where this could have some benefit in that. Where if you have multiple consultants, perhaps you have a consultant that is on vacation and you could just go to the next consultant on the list.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Just a just a couple of questions and maybe this bleeds over a little bit into Mr. Waddams' area of expertise. But I'm looking at your flow chart and previously before this meeting, I was spending more time on the, on the written portion. But I'm curious about how standing exactly is created. Box two of the flow chart talks about the 300-foot radius, which is, I guess, we're going to call those people interested parties or neighbors. Then there's a public register created in box four. Public can, the word can here seems to be the operative word, can submit written comments to create standing. So that seems like the triggering event that creates standing. My question in part is, any, any public member or a public member within that radius?
And Mayor, Council President Page, this question did come up at Planning and Zoning Commission as well. As it's currently drafted, it's not specific to a 300-foot radius. It just says, those who submit written comment create standing. So that's how the ordinance is drafted right now. And also the word can is what came up at Planning and Zoning Commission as well. They wanted to make sure that the word must is notified to the, the public is notified that they must submit written comment to secure their, their standing.
So it is not a can, it's a must?
Yes. Mayor, Council President Page, yes. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe my, my question is similar, and I'm not certain. Jenna, if this is you or Mr. Waddams. I'm going to reference, I believe it's page six or page 360 in the packet in the draft document under eight dash four C dash five prohibitions. Subparagraph A, second sentence. I'm just curious if this language shouldn't be massaged a little bit so that it, it reads more the city or independent businesses, corporations, and franchises must comply with the code and encourages independent businesses, corporations, and franchises to conform to the city's comprehensive planning goals and complement surrounding structures. Of course, must comply to code. You'd also have the legal words that would allow for waivers, blah, blah, blah. But am I reading that correct? Is that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, that is the wording that is currently in there. We can definitely always improve it, but that's the wording that's currently there. But if I'm being directed to clean that up, then I'm going to clean it up.
Mr. Waddams, that would be my request.
Other questions?
Thank you.
All right, great. Okay, we've had the, heard from the staff. We'll now open the public hearing on ordinance 1026-22 and ask those that would like to testify on this ordinance to let us know. Anyone online?
Mr. Mayor, was that ordinance 1027-22?
1026.
Mr. Mayor, Council President Page, there was a typo. It is intended to be ordinance 102622.
Okay, thank you.
We tried to catch it in as many places as
Everybody but me caught that.
Yes. Okay, I don't see any of our those attending remotely. No one's raised their hand. No one's indicated that's here in person. So we'll close the public hearing. Ordinance 1026-22 is before the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve ordinance 102622.
We want to do a first, the ordinance would be a first reading.
First reading of ordinance 102622.
Second. Got a motion and a second to instruct the clerk to read ordinance 1026-22 for the first read.
By title only.
By title only. Okay, you need to say it, not me. By title only.
By title.
Okay, in the second, second. Okay, very good. Okay, I've got a motion and a second to instruct the clerk to read ordinance 1026-22 by title only. Is there any discussion? Here now, the third call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Ordinance 102622, an ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending or repealing Garden City Code Title 8 Development Code, Chapter 2 Base Zoning District Regulations, Article C Land Use Provisions, Section 13 Drive-Thru Establishment, Section 29 Mortuary,
Article C, Land Use Provisions, Section 13, Drive Through Establishment, Section 29 Mortuary, Section 46 Wireless Communication Facility, Chapter 4, Design and Development Regulations, Article 4, General Provisions, Section 3, Fences or Wall and Walls, Section 9 Waterways, Article B, Design Provisions for Residential Structures, Section 3, Single Family and Two-Family Attached and Detached Residential Dwelling Units, Article C, Design Provisions for Non-Residential Structures, Section 5, Prohibitions, Article D, Parking and Off-Street Loading Provisions, Section 3, Parking Design and Improvement Standards, Article F, Sign Provisions, Section 4, Permit Required, Section 12, Regulations for Specific Sign Categories, Section 15, Non-Conforming Signs, Chapter 5, Land Division Regulations, Article C, Special Development Provisions, Section 5, Non-Residential Subdivisions, Chapter 6, Administration, Article A, General Provisions, Section 2, Duties and Authority, Section 3, General Application Process, Section 4, Required Application Information, Section 5, Administrative Process with Notice, Section 6, Administrative Process Without Notice, Section 7, Public Hearing Process, Section 9, Appeals and City Council Reviews, Article B, Specific Provisions, Section 3, Design Review Committee, Section 5, Development Code Amendments, Section 8, Minor Plan Unit Development, and Chapter 7, References, Article A, Definitions, Section 2, Definitions of Terms, repealing all ordinances or parts thereof to the extent they conflict with this ordinance providing all other ordinances, including in the official code are still in effect, notwithstanding some provisions thereof being eliminated, repealing any other ordinance creating or regulating the Design Review Committee, providing for separability, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Next item is item G4.
A lot of discussion. Poor guy's got to see the whole thing.
Okay, authorize Mayor Evans to enter into an agreement with Galena Equity Partners to engage the Urban Land Institute in an Advisory Service Panel Study for the area north of Osage to the Boise River from 40th to 48th Street for a amount not to exceed 25,000. We had a presentation at our last meeting from Bill Truax on this. And the council needed a couple of weeks to kind of think this over. We got a memo on the packet from Mr. Rodems. Letting you know what the criteria is for the city to enter into this partnership. If that's what the council intends to do. So with that, I think this item is now before the council for discussion. And I'll let that commence at your pleasure. Motion's always in order, it will precipitate a discussion. Anybody want to say anything before a motion is offered?
Mr. Mayor? I do have a few comments since the purpose was to allow us to spend some time and contemplate this request. I wanted to share my thought process. When we met last time, I I shared my my interest. I find it very interesting as a concept and I questioned some of the logistics and the challenges to execute. And I'm grateful that we had the time to spend and and review the request and consider some of the ramifications. And I again, I think the city would be well served with a master plan. I find it very intriguing. I'd love to see some continuity and consistency and and some appeal and and certainly creating some destination areas within the city is interesting to me. The challenge that I have with this request is a couple, one is the optics. I find it real challenging for the city to agree to work with a specific developer, unfortunately. I the it creates a precedence that if other developers come to the city with a similar request, we would, I think, unless we had a very clear reason for denial, the expectation would be that the city would be participating in other requests from other developers. I I would love to see this come back to the council as with a consortium of developers and other stakeholders in the city with an ask. But to have a one to one relationship with a developer in the city, I think that that opens the city up for some censure or some question at any rate. And I do think that no offense to Mr. Truax, that the outcome of the analysis would be heavily weighted towards your perspective versus having other developers coming with their and have their ability to influence some of the analysis and the the results of that effort. So I just wanted to share that my thought process and how I am perceiving this again. I applaud the ingenuity. I think there's need. I'm very concerned about the city participating in a one-on-one relationship with the single contractor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I just I just want to echo. And it's really a similar concern. I I have a concern about a parity problem and the precedent that might be established by entering into this agreement with with one for-profit development partner. A secondary concern is the can we heard testimony previously from Mr. Truax that if we did not join with our 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 money with the ask that Galena Equity Partners was going to go forward with the study anyway. And to be and to be candid as a steward of of public money. Like, you know, I have to ask. Well, if we get the benefit without paying for it, why would we pay for it? So and maybe I misunderstood that. And if my colleagues understood that a different way, please speak up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
President of the council. That that in fact was my question and that is my interpretation of the response.
Hey.
Mr. Mayor, I have just I have a little bit different take on it. So I look at it as the as more the city really does need a master plan to start that ball rolling. And so this kind of gets that process underway. And then also I look at it as a way to alleviate pressure on staff to try to, you know, to have some guidelines to follow. You know, it's not something that I think we, the city has the resources to develop as solid of potential master plan with with international experts on how to put this together to come up with something. As well as we just don't have the time to do it or staff to do it to create our own master plan. So this gives us a vehicle to get there. And then, of course, input from the city would would be involved in terms of, okay, it's a baseline master plan that we could do. I don't think. Yes, we have one developer, but that doesn't mean at the end that it that it's gonna be that person's gonna be the sole developer for that entire square block. But it kind of gives a I look at it as a starting point for the for the process that we can then change more, discuss, bring to public, have the public feedback on it and then approve in the end. So from my perspective, it's kind of money well spent to just get that work going. Because otherwise, and I'm not, and I don't know that the length of time it would take to get it done. Or whether we'll get the same product. Don't help them.
Okay, good, further discussion.
Mayor, I share the concerns about particularly about the optics. I think the cost is modest and and if you don't have buy-in, you know, that seems to me that isn't isn't exactly fair, but but I'm sensitive to your argument, Councilmember Jorgensen, as well. On the other hand, I agree with Councilmember Jacobs that it looks like this is going to be a comprehensive effort. And for the money, it looks like a value to me. But I'm conflicted on the concerns that you've expressed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would point out that the the analysis is not for the entire city. It's for a limited area of the city. That's another concern is I, you know, that I although I think this is very valuable, I'm not taking that away. I believe when the city does participate, it should be in consideration of the entire city. I would, we have constituents that would be asking, why did you approve dollars for a specific part of the city and overlook my part? And that's another concern I have.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I, Mr. Mayor, I think my perspective is this gives us the template if we can then roll out for the city. So it's not, I'm looking at it as a broader, right? This gives us a starting point, gives us a template, gives us a mechanism to have a master plan, takes some of the pressure off the staff. And then we can say, okay, here's an idea, here's an idea of what we've got for the city. Let's now, okay, let's sound the boundaries, bring in other developers and say this is the type of master plan that we've we've kind of started our foundation, created a template. That's kind of how I look at it for other developers to commit. You know, this is the quality that we want when we develop our master plans citywide.
Thank you for the discussion.
So, Mr. Mayor, may I ask Councilmember Jacobs? So is the is the template to have a consultant for each section of the city we're looking at? Or is the template the the pattern that may be presented by this particular partnership?
I guess the way I look at it is it gives us a starting point for what a solid master plan would look like. And gives us that foundation. If at that point later, our our staff has resources to it, they then have a foundation. They're not starting from literal scratch, but they have a mechanism, you know, to develop you know, a continued master plan. And if that means expanding it and bringing in other developers, I guess I just look at it as a starting point. But then we can adjust and change as we see fit. But it's it's kind of better than not having anything. And then, you know, as a blueprint in terms of the optics of this of the city, I look at it as, hey, here's here's an idea of what we've got as a council, what this area might look like. And so not necessarily, well, that's just for this developer, but more we approved this because this is kind of the vision of this is when we when we roll out a master plan for the city gets developed, this is an idea of what it would look like. And we just partnered with them because they came to the city and are helping us develop a template for a master plan.
I I think we need to think just just as you're considering this. Master plans are are area specific. So how you would master plan an area between Veterans Parkway and 45th Street wouldn't likely carry over to the area of in our area of impact south of the river, west of town. So there are steps to get to Councilmember Jacobs' point. There are steps that you go through in a master plan that can have some value as a template. Although those are pretty easy to identify from sources that are already out there. There's lots of master plans we've looked at options here in the past. So it's if there was an expansion of this, it would be contiguous kind of expansion. But still, it might be very specific to the to the geographic area that's there. So Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to comment. Yes.
Do you have an opinion on on what you your thoughts on? Because with your experience of leading the city?
Well, I think the perception of how we spend our money to benefit in a perfect world, you make decisions that create a value that accrue to the whole city. And you can argue both sides of that with this request. Because the presumption is with a master plan, you're going to get a level of development and a consistency and a quality presumably that might not occur if you don't have a master plan. Ms. Ball very eloquently brought out, we've got areas in town that have 150 by 50 foot wide, 150 foot deep lots. And we're going to see little pieces of of things come in over time. The area that Mr. Two Acts is talking about, they've assembled is a number of parcels, not all of them, of course. So when I have my tax revenue hat on, you'd like to see highest and best use scenario that the developer can count on for a specific area. Councilmember Jorgensen's point that you know, what am I, Swiss cheese? Because I don't live in that area. We don't have we have very few areas that are going to be in a position to be master planned left in the city. And overwhelmingly, those are east of Glenwood. When the fairgrounds redevelops. When I said when, I don't know if I'll see it. Someday, that's going to be a master plan project. So I I think the council has some latitude here. I understand the perception issue. You can you can look at it as we're helping a developer make money. Or you can look at it as we're getting $135,000 out of it to do something we want to do. So, you know, I think messaging that, you can go either way. I think it gets down to the comfort level. I think there is some validity in the fact that if someone wanted to come in and have the city participate in a master plan in some some other area. If they're willing to put in the 135,000 and want 25,000 from us. I'm sure they're going to be raining down on us over that. We just have to have to see. So if I was voting on this, I think it's an opportunity that I would take a pretty hard look at. Because the the messaging on it, or you're getting embedded with a developer, the final decisions are going to come back here. And there's no obligation that the city incurs if we participate that guarantees an outcome that it's going to be satisfactory to Mr. Truax. So final decision on all this stuff is going to come back right here. So if if the council declines and Mr. Two Acts completes it on his own nickel, I think that's Councilmember Page makes a point there. It's going to get done anyway. If that's going to happen, we've got lots of places that we put 25,000. If that's going to happen, we've got lots of places that we could put twenty-five thousand dollars to. To my knowledge, unless something's changed, and you'd have to tell me this, Councilmember Jacobs, if there's been any action on the urban renewal board on the same request.
So, this did not, we had an urban renewal meeting a week ago, and this was not on the agenda. And so, it was not a topic that was discussed, and so it probably needs to go in front of the urban, a presentation for the urban renewal. I think urban renewal may, I think the lead, you know, the city, I think the lead at that, I think if, determining what the city would decide, they may follow suit. But I, that, that's, that's speculation on my part.
One other thing. Jenna, do you see any difference in the staff loading, whether the city's put money in it or not, or whether he does it on his own? We're still going to have to process this, the same, have the same staff loading, it seems to me, but you may have a different opinion.
Um, Mayor, I'm, I'm trying to think through that as I walk up, and I would suspect that Garden City through P I R even would be compelled to provide all the plans and ordinances and whatnot to the Urban Land Institute, as well as, as staff has, would be very happy to have interviews, and I suspect you all, I would reach out to each of you for interviews. So, permitted that staff is permitted to participate in that, to assist the master plan, inform the master plan. I don't see a difference in the staff loading.
Okay, thank you. And just to convolute this a little more, I've participated in several Urban and Land Institute evaluations and recommendations. And I don't, I don't have a particularly high expectation of a wonderful result. We've got highly qualified people that come in with lots of experience from around the country, and in three days, or two or three days, not here very long, get briefed on the circumstances, in this case, it would be from Mr. True Acts, they look at the area, they interview folks that have either a decision-making role, one or more council members like me, perhaps Jenna, perhaps some other community members. And they develop a report, and the report's intended to drive a future outcome. As you, you know, the, the, you don't get a plan in three days, you get a, you might get a, gee, in large chunks, look at these kinds of uses here, and these kinds of densities there, and that, that kind of thing. So, I think you just have to have a measured expectation, whether we invest in it or not. Likely, we'll get good information, we'll get some interesting analysis from people that don't live here, that have a fresh look at a particular area. But I think you've got to be, I just don't want to create an expectation that you're going to come out of this with a master plan from the Urban Land Institute in this particular investment. Okay? It's a, it's a starting point. Master plan takes some, some time and a lot of, lot of money on the part of, in this case, Mr. True Acts, to really affect the development of that in a form that you can take it through a public process. So, it sounds like I'm discouraging that, I'm not trying to throw a blanket on it, but I, I've been through a lot of fairgrounds most recently, just went through one, frankly, in the city of voices. So. So, you know, given the hour, I'd like to punt on this one for a minute, if you're asking my opinion. Because there's some, you know, Mr. True Acts has a representative here, I think this discussion needs to go back to him and let him correct any errors in my presumptions, if there are any, and maybe bring this conversation in summary form back and see if there's a response that might affect your decision.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask you a question about the, the language? If, if there were a motion authorizing you, that, that motion doesn't bind you to an agreement, does it?
No, no, the motion I would ask is that we table this for
Right, no, I understood, but just for clarification in terms of
Oh, oh, the agreement, oh, I see. Well, the agreement would need to come back before the council.
Yeah.
At the actual agreement.
Yeah.
I, you might authorize it, but in a situation like this, Mr. Adams would have to review the agreement and report back to the council. I wouldn't sign it without.
Exactly, it doesn't bind us.
Well, no, and, and I don't want that unilateral responsibility on this issue, I'm willing to take it on a lot of issues, but I don't want to take it on this one, because I have a, I have some different perspectives on my city council, so, so I don't want to jump into that without the council.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we, we push this until the, okay, meeting gives Two Acts and their partners time to digest what we've said here up on the council, address some of the concerns that each of us have said.
I have a second. To ta, to table this until August.
Yeah, I'll second that.
They've got a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That date again?
I think it's August eighth.
August eighth, correct.
Is that correct?
Does that give? Enough time for that?
Yeah, I think they, I'm, I'm presuming they want a decision, and, and I'm sorry, we're not giving that right now, but I think it warrants a, and that's my opinion, council doesn't have to agree with the mayor.
So, I guess my question was that, is two weeks enough time? The answer and that's all of that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, is there any other discussion on the motion to continue this item to August eight? Hey, hearing that, Court Call.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Okay, next item on our agenda is unfinished business. Are you guys still awake out there? Okay.
It's always August eight.
Okay, we're, we're continuing, and this is, we're not taking an action on this tonight, we're continuing our discussion, and I will invite our guests that have been so patient for the last three or four hours up here, that's Hannah and Jason, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, disappointed order.
Yes.
And I'm not advocating for this, I just want to remind the mayor that you do have discretion to put time limits on the presentation.
Okay, okay.
I think we're really just giving you a little bit of an update.
Nothing new, it's very small items, actually.
Okay.
Well, there is new, but.
Appreciate the update, and we thank you in advance for your consideration of the hour, and I apologize that we, you ended up on an agenda that was so full.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, Hannah Ball, two fifteen East Thirty-fourth Street, Garden City, Idaho, and we put a little presentation that will follow directly. So, we'll start with just kind of where we are to date. This is our third round of working sessions, and then Jason's going to follow.
Is that good?
So, this is our third round of work sessions, we will be discussing licensing, design standards that primarily were brought up with staff and design review, amenities, process for approval, and your questions tonight.
Maybe not time for questions.
Okay. So, a topic that came up in both previous, this body as well as the additional bodies, was licensing. So, essentially, yeah, third-party certifications can be anywhere from a thousand to two thousand dollars, design standards, do you want to speak to that, that's?
Well, we, so we, we've obviously taken kind of what was given to us before, and we added a section of design standards for tiny homes in general, so meaning, I think it's our goal to get some sort of standard, so if a tiny home comes into Garden City, that there is a process to review it, and there's some specific standards that it has to, so that was kind of a goal of what we did with this latest updated version of code.
Since you've also seen us, we've actually taken the tiny house communities, and we've taken them from the P permitted use to C conditional use, so everything will come back through the bodies. Updated design standards, so we have provided some updated design standards, and specifically, design review really weighed in on how they wanted the units to look, and they're actually, we think they're pretty tight and restrictive elements.
I mean, I think we'll still have some changes, because we've got some new recommendations since this is middle, but I think we've mostly dealt with that in design review, because that was, that's kind of their area of expertise, like what code design standard should be included, and so there was a lot of discussion, and we're going to kind of take that back and modify from there.
We've continued to implement all the conversations with amenities. One idea that staff had, because we did take the multifamily section of code, and we looked at that for the amenity standards, but staff had made the record, or had the idea that not only could you use that, but you could say, all communities must have these two, and then pick from an additional list of X, Y, Z, and I actually like that, because I do really believe that high-quality amenities are very important in a, in a community of this nature. So, to Jen, to Jenna's, since we left planning and zoning, we were left with the question, will the individual homes, what body will that come through in, within Garden City? And so, we did, we did clarify that the homes themselves will go through the review, the design review process recommended by staff. So, that's where we are to date, Jenna.
Yeah, so I think we've really, we've added two things, so I think, one, we've, we've kind of said, look, it seems like the city is leaning toward, the homes themselves should be certified by some sort of third party that certifies like the actual building and safety of the homes themselves, and then we've also added a process for the city to do a certification and approval. So, we've kind of covered both sides of that coin, I think is really the goal, so that as we continue to make improvements to the code, maybe, like I said, it'll be something that's pretty no-brainer for the, this council to approve, because it, you kind of cover all those bases of, hey, is this safe, is this something that the city can allow?
And then again, the communities are going to come back, it's not a P permitted use, it's a C.
When you, pardon me, when you say licensing, licenses, what are you, are you talking about licensed with the city, or, or licensed to move them on the road?
So, I mean, kind of all of the above, so.
Okay.
So, really, the truth is, all the tiny homes is part of our, our licensing with the city, you'll have to prove that they're roadworthy.
Okay.
And so, I think that's one of the ways that we kind of say, hey, these, these aren't permanent homes, that's why we don't go through the normal building inspection process, that's why we're going to have another inspection process, that's going to be, like I said, it could be RVIA that certifies those as, as that process, or, or a third party, so there are some third-party inspection processes for tiny homes specifically.
Here's a really interesting question that actually came up originally at this body, I believe Councilmember Page brought it up, and it's, it was interesting and intriguing, and we really went in and, and looked at adding a percentage to allow the traditional RV to come into a tiny house community. So, I, I really liked this idea, and it had merit, and so we, we had introduced it to code possibly by the second round, and then so, currently, the two previous bodies have said, tiny house community or RVs, you know, pick one or the other, especially as you're testing this into the community. So, I, I found that to be an interesting topic, again, I like the fifteen percent, Jason's of the opinion that we should have tiny houses, you know, tiny house community needs to look, and, and that's been kind of echoed, so that would be a question or consideration for this body is, where are you with, do you want strictly RVs, do you want hybrid, do you want tiny house communities?
What, what do you view as a, you know, to envision this a little bit? What do you think a minimum area would be to create a community that you could pencil out the amenities you need, fund those, and that sort of thing? Do you, have you thought that, about that?
I think that's the other question.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's fair, I don't need an answer, I just.
So, that was the first question we wanted to leave you with, is, is there any percentage of RVs, or do we want tiny house communities only? The second question is, what's the size of a community? What measurement really does make up a community? Is it more than three? Or what, what do you envision is an appropriate size to be able to add some quality amenities? What's that sweet spot of development, really, when you look at something like this?
Well, I think you're looking at a market decision, you know, I'm looking at, it's an RV community, but up, up Porshu Vanrode, past the cemetery.
I know.
Yeah, you know, they've got a little recreation area with laundry, you know, I don't know what else in there, you can, you know, fill your propane tanks up there, and, you know, they, they've got an RV dump, and those, there's just, but at any rate, you have to have some, obviously, you know this, but I don't know what that critical mass is to develop the amenities, because it seems to me that, you know, there are some things, some amenities that would really, I don't know if necessary is the right word, but you know, you're not going to have a gym in your tiny house, so to speak, you know, so, and I don't want to define what those, necessarily what those amenities are, so I just didn't know if you had, if you had a thought on that, because that unit cost for the amenities needs to be spread over so much, so I didn't, didn't know.
Well, I use Planet Fitness.
Say again?
I use Planet Fitness.
Okay.
Ten dollars a month. Real bargain.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, I, I do think that changing in our section of code that we proposed, changing them to conditional use permits, it really allows, obviously, the bodies to look at a site-by-site design and allow you to say, does this feel like a community? Did the type of amenities that they compiled, is it appropriate even for this street or this area, or, so we also see on a street-by-street basis, what if it's already next to a, a gym and a laundry shop? What if it's? What if it's not? And so allowing that conditional use process, it really kind of is going to make for a more appropriate time and design to come back through.
Maybe to hit those individually. Really is maybe the goal. So it. I think the other big thing that's come up, and it's obvious to come up at this meeting too, was parking. You know, right now, the code we've written for the C two-zoned tiny home communities. Right now, it's, it's, I would say, it's only requiring like basically a little less than half a space per tiny home. And I think that question has come up, is that appropriate? And I think so. That's another big question that that's, you know, we've kind of talked through now the other committees. But again, you know, maybe within the parking stuff, if this ends up being code that's getting approved, maybe that can be something that gets looked at. You know, I think my take has always been that the requirement isn't what's actually going to happen. People are going to park how much there is. But, you know, I think we're willing to make the code whatever the council sees as appropriate.
Well, to answer that question, I think, notwithstanding any opinion I may have, just listening to the council discussion this evening, parking is something that we've got to think about. And we're seeing an awful lot of congestion west of veterans right now, conflicts with UPS, the schools, all the stuff, you know, that I don't need to go into. But the cars will go somewhere and, and the officials that don't have cars. But that's, that's one thing at the grass. I think the the conditional use permit component can deal with if there was an appropriate place next to a laundry mat, maybe you don't need a laundry as an amenity. I get that. If it's next to a park, maybe you don't need as much open space. I don't know. So, so. Then, just so, I don't want to misunderstand you. So did you have a chance to look at Charlie's memo?
I think we did.
Okay, so as I, as I read through that, seems to me there's some workarounds, if I want, if I can use that word, to create potential opportunities in what we might call today an RV park. So, so kind of mixing these in with that, I, again, see a huge difference between one of these and a twenty-foot long, eight-foot-wide RV that you can also tour around. So, so, you know, what, how the code would address that would be something I think would be, would be interesting in something that might be doable within our current RV code. Maybe I'm missing the boat on that.
And I think, I think you're right. And I think, I mean, it's possible that we could look at the current RV code. I mean, my take on the RV code is that we basically built the code so we wouldn't have RV parks. Because I'm guessing we just don't want them. I mean, right now, it's a three-acre minimum for an RV park.
To be honest with you, that was part of my question on what?
Yeah.
What threshold would there be to make a tiny home community viable? And I'm, and this is just my own thought process. This is, I like these kinds of things because this isn't an action item, just kind of keeping some stuff around. I know everybody's tired, so I won't drag this on too long. But we've got a hundred and we got fifty by a hundred and fifty lots that are selling for over four hundred thousand dollars. So your ROI to make something happen there is, is inconsistent just at face value with what you could get for tiny home space. So, so I'm thinking, well, where could that happen? And, and I guess it didn't work out with there, you know, between the bench and Chenden was another potential area if you could assemble the parcels. But, but that's kind of why I'm asking, there's some ROI or some threshold on the size that, that we need to think about. Because I don't know that it makes any sense if there were fifty by a hundred and fifty lots between Chenden and, and the bench to kind of start sticking these in there in different places. I'm not sure that, that would accomplish what it seems to me your vision is when I look at these graphics.
And originally, when, when I looked at that RV code, I, I laid it out on how it read, just how our current RV code read. And I also really kind of disliked that whole theory of like, you got a three-acre RV park, you don't require great amenities, and you want to put a fence around it and put a manager's office twenty-four hours. It's like, that's, that's not.
Doesn't work.
Doesn't work.
Well, and I think maybe the RV code was written just to not have RV parks. Because I don't think anybody thinks that the RV park would be great if it was just bigger. Like, nobody's going, man, if it was not just a one-acre RV park, but it's three, that's what we'll approve. We love it.
Well, you're right. I'm just, I just, I'm sorry, I, I have slipped into my own land use.
Sure.
Private sector.
I personally believe that one, a one-acre site is a sweet spot. Because, and again, it allows for a lot of fun amenities. It has a lot of open space. We don't imagine the tiny house communities, well, they're designed to not be dense and not be packed and crowded and, and loaded in a manner that is, doesn't foster a sense of community. I mean, that's the idea is we don't want to have communities that people can't say, wow, look how unique they did it. Look at the quality landscape and how they laid this out, even to the point where we put, maybe we put parking upfront in a centralized area and have walking paths throughout the community. So something that's very visually stunning and fosters really a sense of community.
Well, then you could, another question you could answer then, not necessarily now, but as we've talked about this is density per acre.
Well, and so let me kind of answer at least directly like your question. Like, so there is a picture of a little tiny home community. We have a few of them kind of mixed in here. You know, we've kind of researched, obviously, tiny homes. And we've, I've actually visited a number of tiny home communities across the country. I mean, I see tiny home communities as small as like four units that feel like a community, like this kind of thing here, where they have a common space between them and there's these little homes. Some of them are much bigger. I mean, like I said, Hannah said one acre, but I would say to say one acre is a sweet spot where you might have twenty-five tiny homes. You know, I don't think it's necessarily any better than having five.
Sure.
Personally, you know, I mean, I think those both can work. Like, if you have a little small parcel and you have five small ones, I think it's possible to work. I think it's really going to come down to what you guys think is appropriate in Garden City.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Sure.
And so part, part of the challenge, I think, is, you know, what code are you pivoting from, right? And so I'm going to redirect you back to the comments of the November work session. And I think it's really important, I want to underscore it, is at that time, Mr. Adams provided a memo both to design review and to see council. And I'm still in alignment. And since you've done research of tiny home communities across the nation, I still think there's a lot of value if you can find code in anywhere across the nation and bring it forward for review. I think that would help create some focus and clarity around truly what, what we're going after here. Because, again, I want to reiterate, I understand you have a vision. We're having a tough time translating it. And so therefore, I think if you came up with some language, particularly around clarifying, is this an RV? Is this a tiny home to me? I think that would be extremely beneficial.
Well, and I, I think we have done that in the latest iteration. I think the issue with just taking, because we did take other code. I mean, our starting point was other code and some sections of Garden City code. I think the challenge is that some of the sections of Garden City code that we use, the staff feels like they need to be updated. And so rather than use that, we've been just kind of updating the language of the code itself so that it actually fits better with where we're going as a city in the direction of our code. But we also, we have examples right here in Idaho. So I think we just have confirmation, just in the last month, that Blaine County did approve their tiny home amendment. And so we have that language, but it just isn't similar to Garden City code in the way that it's written. So it's not necessarily usable. But we, I think what we, what we take from that is how they got to their city council are looking at it and going, hey, we're going to approve this. Or in that case, it was the county. But how they kind of got around to approving it, same thing with city of Moscow. You know, what city of Moscow did was basically nothing.
Right.
They effectively allowed RVs to no longer have a three-month limit on their time stays. And they just said, hey, you just got to keep the wheels on them. And then they allowed people to apply for a conditional use permit for a RV park of one RV. And that was how they got around it. I mean, that's all they did.
So my, where I'm going is, I would encourage you to look outside of the state. I think your vision isn't justified by anything that's happened so far in the state of Iowa. So, you know, you're looking across the nation is Austin, is Cincinnati, wherever else. Bring that code and say, boom, this is what another city has done. This is a success or drawbacks that they learned from. Let us digest that and compare it to your proposed language.
And I, I did the research and I looked at, I would actually say it was a lack of, lack of amenities and lack of design. And so that's kind of been a big driving force of adding more amenities, required amenities than I've ever seen.
And that's fine. I mean, we can take and cut and paste, right? But, but I do, I, I would be very interested in seeing something outside of the state because the state hasn't demonstrated anything.
Sure, sure. And we can get, we can certainly get you, like, if you just want a comparative. I think the tricky part is, like I said, the things aren't going to be very comparative because of the way code is written. It's kind of, again, some cities are referencing their own code. And a little bit of what we're doing within our code is the same way. And it makes it a little bit tricky to compare. I think you can kind of at least see how some of the communities do regulate the same things we're regulating. Like, you know, some of them do have like some way to regulate what the tiny homes look like. A lot of them don't. I mean, I would say like, having design standards for tiny homes is maybe not something we see in code. Like, the places in Idaho don't do that certainly. So like I said.
I've kind of need to move this along. We've still got a budget hearing to have.
And so that was it. Again, just wanted you guys to really field those two big items in your mind. What defines a community? Is it three? Is it twenty? And what do you believe with the, should we have any RV, traditional RVs? Or none in a tiny house community? Should there be a percentage? So I would just kind of leave you with those thoughts, those questions. And then again, we, we have really, in all of our work, we have been relating all of our theories back to the comprehensive plan. And again, I do think Garden City, we want to be, we want to be leaders in housing, but we want to do it in a way that just exceeds every standard we've ever seen. And that's really what, you know, a lot of this code is to inspire a real high level of a quality community. And so a lot, you know, again, you can look through the presentation, but we, we look at the comprehensive plan for really that high inspiration of design.
All right, well, thank you for giving us some things to think about. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience around. Okay, yes. Yes.
Sorry.
Another five-minute break, and then we'll take on the budget. Thank you. Thank you. We'll reconvene the meeting at ten eleven. Next item on our agenda is new business, FY twenty twenty-three, TND budget and executive staff compensation discussion. This is page four seventy-seven. I ask Lisa to run us through the high-level changes in the budget or presentation of the budget. I'm trying to have, take your glasses off so you can read this. Sorry. Let's get to the right page here really quick. Okay. So, so there's in the budget presentation, there'll be, well, let's just, you just take us through what you've got prepared. And then I'll make my other comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a very high-level presentation of the draft budget. There will be our formal presentation at the tentative approval on August eighth. And then the public hearing will be in two weeks after that, August twenty-second. And that's what we've actually published ahead of time. We have to give that date to the county. That date actually shows on, on our tax forms or our tax, property tax assessments.
Really need to make sure we have a quorum for these next couple of months.
Right, right.
August eighth, and I've already cleared this, I will be participating fully from Zoom.
Then that's.
I'll be, I'll be in.
Right, and the August eighth is, is truly just a tentative approval. Again, most of the time, our budget presentations are, are fairly, fairly quick. So just some high-level, you know, it's interesting this year, it feels like a lot of our budget decisions were made for us through outside forces. As we know, the, the general fund has been impacted mostly by the salaries and the wages. I did get information from the treasurers around the, the valley that I participate in a group with. And our, our raises are in line, our property tax increases in line with what everybody's doing around the valley and other jurisdictions, as well as Garden City did implement some of those raises early. So we have, as we have to, a balanced budget with an anticipated draw for a special project of the four hundred thousand for the flood investigation study. As far as our property tax revenues, we'll be doing, asking for the three percent increase that is allowable. And our new construction, which had it been more, we are capped at eight percent with the three percent increase. And then any new construction, our new construction equaled about a half a percent. So we'll be at three and a half percent total. You know, we go through each of these line items. So many things are repetitive year after year. We get the revenue, state revenue sharing from the sales tax and the liquor distribution from AIC's projections. Every year, we exceed those, but we, we tend to stay with their projections as they are maybe a little more conservative. Or the department heads have reviewed the projections of revenues, and we've adjusted anything accordingly. Expenses, as I talked to you about the raises that have been implemented. We go through line item by line item. We have adjusted a few of those for inflation, a few supply line items. For a lot of our line items, we, we can manage to those numbers. Maybe that we do a little less staff training, or maybe training is kept local versus something that might require travel. Development Services is a pretty straightforward budget, so I didn't really talk too much about it. It will be based on permits that come in. We're seeing, we're seeing the trend to look like we'll meet budget this year. But again, some of those are a timing issue. If a developer doesn't pull the permit at a certain time, we don't collect that revenue. Then the Enterprise Fund, which consists of water, sewer, and sanitation. You'll notice some, some pretty good rate increases that will be projected. We will have budget hearings as we are required to for anything over five percent. We're looking at eight percent in water, which really is a combination of the increases in operating expenses and the need for additional capital improvements over the coming years. Sewer is the big one, eighteen percent increase. Boise City is, of course, our sewer treatment system, the water renewal plant out here at Joplin. They are doing some major capital improvements. I think it's approximately ninety million that they will be doing. They did receive the approval for their bond this last, last go-round of voting. Had that, according to Boise City's numbers, had that bond not passed. Had that, according to Boise City's numbers, had that bond not passed, the rate pairs would have seen a 53% increase in their bill. Because it passed, they're going to see a 10% increase. Colin and myself met with the manager as we do every year. And we ourselves as an end user or as a customer of that sewer treatment that we will see a 13% increase in our charges. Everything that they're doing out there is really driven by the EPA. They are now adding more layers of things that they have to account for the phosphorus that comes into the water from the runoff of fertilizer. You learn a lot about sewer treatment that you don't really want to know about. From a partnership standpoint, I'm, I'm very pleased with our partnership with Boise. I think they do a really good job of staying on top of these things. There are other jurisdictions that did not and are paying the price now with these requirements, but we're looking again at 13% increase on a $2 million bill that we pay each year. And they'll be again charging us based on, they actually monitor what we put into their sewer system, take samples so they know what's in it and they charge us accordingly, not only on how much, but what's in it.
I could guess what's in it.
Yeah. So we all need to be conscious. And then the three and a half percent in sanitation, we have built in with our contract with Republic Services that they will have a three and a half percent increase. It was loosely based on the consumer price index with this current contract. We actually locked in that three and a half percent, which was a really good move this year. You know, again, just kind of talking about the highlights, if, if you feel like we need another meeting, we could certainly look at having a special meeting before August 8th. That's certainly an option, but you know, your department heads have been, you know, through their numbers. A lot of it is repetitive from year to year. So there aren't a lot of changes. We do have some of the ARBA money built in that we know we will spend next year. But other than that, we've we're again, we're, we're fairly consistent from year to year. So I will stand for any questions and allow the mayor to make his comments.
Mr. Mayor, question two. Lisa, just because I'm new to this, can we just kind of go through the process? So we'll, in August, we'll have a couple of meetings and we'll go through and then is there, is there public hearings and things like that? Do people come forward? And, and, and you know, obviously maybe protest an 18%. I can just, can you walk me through that, the steps?
Yes. So, so at the August 8th meeting, what you will be approving would be just a summary and it'd be a tentative budget. And then that's get, gets published in the paper. Notice up, we'll publish it twice and we will notify that there will be a public hearing on the budget on the 22nd of August. People are welcome to come and make the comment. There will, in addition to that, be a public hearing on the rate increases. So, so two separate
That's their opportunity.
Correct. It will be interesting. I think in the, you know, 14 years, I think I remember one person coming out to our budget hearing. Yeah. Um, you know, again, it will, we'll see if, what kind of comment we get, but, but yes, there definitely is an opportunity. It's published in the paper. It's on our website. So we definitely get the word out.
And then final approval is?
Final approval will be on the 22nd. We will have an ordinance. Because of our timing, it's a unique situation. So we will request that the rules are suspended and we adopt and publish that night. And then again, things get, the ordinance gets published in the paper. I have to certify and submit to the, the county, the state tax commission for our property tax levy by September, usually September 6th, September 9th. So that's why the timing happens as it does.
Thank you.
I don't really have a lot of comments. We, we, the budget represents maintaining our current service levels, which is of course heavily driven by payroll. And I think we all continue to get thank yous from our staff for the salary adjustments that we implemented that we, that are carried forward in this budget. There is an area that we did expand somewhat in the general fund and that's our stabilization fund. There's some money in excess of what we typically carry in that line item. Typically we carry 25,000 in that line item, that numbers in the $60,000 range. Now, I don't know if it's exactly 60 now. I, I could look here.
What is the stabilization?
It's a, it's an, it used to be called a contingency fund. But it's, I like stabilization language better because that more accurately represents what it is if we, if we have a police investigation, for example, that exceeds our anticipated investigative line item. We can stabilize the budget by drawing down that stabilization fund. So that, that's what it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So so the reason I mentioned that is for any discussion that we're going to have on our executive staff compensation, that would be a market adjustment. We're going to talk about our city attorney salary here in just a minute, particularly. And I just wanted to let you know, there's a mechanism to fund some changes in that if we need to. Depending on the pleasure of council. Just a note that I want to make sure we're all understanding, and I've mentioned this before, but we're buying police cars with ARBA money this year and hopefully the council will approve us to do that again next year. The strategy there is, you know, someday after, after, after next year, we're going to have to come up with that money somewhere else because there won't be our and we built in with these raises, some ongoing obligations to our staff. So we are, we're going to have to grow into the budget obligations we're creating with the salary increases primarily that we instituted. And how we're going to grow into that is the high value development that is already under construction. Lisa mentioned a few minutes ago that our new construction represents a half a percent of the three and a half percent increase in our property tax revenues. So, and that's up frankly from the year before. So over the next two years, the boardwalk, I can't remember what the true X things are called. Parkway Station. As those hit the tax rolls, we're going to see significantly more than a half a percent on the new construction side. And that's going to help us grow in to the budget. The other component, one little complicator there is the, the new construction value is computed based on the previous year's levy at 90%. So this inflationary spike we've hit has driven the levy rate down. So it takes more new construction to achieve increases that we're, that we need to grow into. And that's, that's just a fact. The other thing that we're hanging our hat on a little bit as far as strategically looking into the future is House Bill 735 and the impact that will have. That in two years, we will fully be receiving the revenue sharing on what is now being captured in the internet sales tax world. So that is a significant number. And if the legislature doesn't monkey with that, then there'll be a lot more revenue that goes into the sales tax distribution formula, which will accrue to the cities. And sales tax makes mayor sweat if, when you're thinking about counting on that because of fluctuations that can occur. But our, our trending line has been really good over time on increases in sales tax revenue to the cities. So it's 5% or more, you can almost count on it until you really count on it. But we're going to be counting on it. So so I just want to mention those things because I'm pretty comfortable, very comfortable with what we're doing, but there's, you know, there's some adjustments that could come in the next couple of years if, if these revenue streams don't, don't come in. Our big stabilization fund is our fund balance, which is hovering around $4 million right now. That will be reduced some depending on what the general inspection costs and the rate at which they come in accrue. So we're, we're in a good place in my view. And we're equipped to do what we're doing. On the rate increase issue, the 18% is really 5% on our side. The rest is passed through the voices and we're obligated to pay contractually. So we either absorb it, which frankly we can't afford to do, or we pass it through. And then the same benefit that accrued to the general fund employees accrue to the public works employees out of the enterprise fund. So I could argue for more than 5% on the sewer rate, but I think we can make that work. Want to be, keep that as tight as we think we can. Water, we haven't raised the rates on water for how many years? Number of years?
Number of years.
Yeah. Yeah. I can't remember exactly, but for a number of years. And that's picking up again some inflationary costs. In our, in our, some of the detail as you dig down into the budget, where Colin needs we need another portable generator. These are things that are what, a hundred grand Colin for that, for that thing? We've got to be set up for extended power outage to keep our water and sewer system working. It's either standby generators or portables to fill in the gaps. So there's still some big ticket items in there that as we want to draw down our capital account, which I don't recommend. We need the increase in the water. Not to mention that revenue is going to be hurt a little bit because it, I didn't even turn my sprinkler on until June 15th this year. Consumption.
I've been making a fork.
So again, this isn't an action item now. It'll be at our next meeting, but if, as you go through it, if you have questions, I think I've talked to some of you privately or offline, but ask questions. Lisa's our go-to resource, specific items in a department's budget. If you want some information or some education on why or how often or whatever, reach out to the department. They're happy to, they're happy to explain that. And in a lot of instances, certainly better than I have. So that's, that's that item. Any comments or questions you have now, we'll be happy to address. But I don't want you to be bashful in the next couple of weeks if you have things, you know, just, just ask. You don't have to wait till the meeting.
Mr. Mayor said one question. So do you plan around things that potentially coming down the line from the Idaho legislature, you know, where, you know, there was that one bill where they wanted to eliminate property tax and then raise sales tax and things like that? Or is it kind of like the candid, it's just if it happens, it happens and we pivot at that point? I'm just, I'm wondering how as the mayor, your budgeting process, you take into account what the heck is going on at the state legislature?
Well, the decisions we're making for this budget are based on the codes that are in place today. And speculating what might happen is there's just not a reasonable way that I can represent to you why, other than my concern. The hedge against all that, and I argued this over the years. I haven't had to argue with this council. I'm very grateful for that. But we've had discussions over the appropriate amount of fund balance we should carry. And with, I don't know, 50 million, I'm making numbers up now, $50 million for the sewer and water infrastructure in the ground or maybe twice that much. I don't know. The, the, the potential liabilities we have, I'm never concerned about having too much fund balance. But our fund balance is our hedge against the legislature doing something stupid.
That just helps.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's
Because they're unpredictable.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's
That's a good word.
I mean, they are.
Yeah, if, if you lose your job and have a real healthy savings account, it's a little easier than if you lose your job and you don't have a nickel to your name. So it's the same, same principle.
Thank you.
Yes. Anything else? Well, thank you all for sticking in. We, we aren't used to having four and a half hour meetings. They come once in a while, but I want to compliment the council on the deliberation, the analysis you did, the challenges you gave each other and the, and the applicants, people that spoke here. I'm very honored to be the mayor of this council. I'm just excited. I know James has indicated, gee, we're all pretty new, but you're a quality bunch and I want you to, I want you to know that. That's my opinion.
Thank you for whatever it's worth.
So anyway, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to discuss executive staff compensation?
Motion to adjourn is denied. Okay, with that said, part of the compensation issues we've dealt with have been not just the 6% of the general group, but 7% for sworn officers. But we've also included in that, there have been some market adjustments that we've made for some specific positions. The one I wanted to visit with you tonight is our city attorney. The, there's two, two ways that, that I have traditionally approached compensation anywhere in the city. But the main way is peer comparisons as opposed to just internal equity. Internal equity is appropriate, I think, in positions where you have an administrative assistant and the scope of their duties for the person they're assisting. It would be Susanna, for example, for me, Elise, Elisa for Colin, Bailey for Rick, would be Kena for Jenna. There are a lot of similarities in there. You, you want to look at an internal equity factor there, maybe with some time and grade and some other things that might, might, might influence that. But for policemen, you need to look at equity with policemen. Not equity with our librarians or, or, or public works folks. Same with public works. Tonight is with the city attorney. Our city attorney has been compensated, uh, I would argue below the market for city attorneys in the treasure valley for his tenure as garden city. And uh, from my perspective, uh, there are some compensating factors for that. Our city attorney is master of his own unit. He's got a good working environment, I believe. He works for a mayor and council that respect him, uh, give him significant latitude in his way he operates. We don't burden him with outcome-based expectations on decisions he needs to make. I think we keep him pretty clean in that regard, try to. He does have to put up with his mayor on some occasions where I might try to lead something, but he pretty much ignores that. So uh, there are arguments that the size of the city has an impact, you can argue that, or you can consider that. The span of control uh, is an issue, how many people do you supervise? You have those criteria, but uh, the criteria that I'm thinking of particularly for this discussion is the responsibility that is increased over time. So uh, we don't have an HR department aside from portion that Lisa takes care of, which is health benefits and, and uh, consultation, I consult with Lisa all the time. Ultimately, the risk management function, whether it's HR, whether it's police procedure, whether it's uh, decorum of the mayor, whether it's actions of land use taken by this body or, or advising on those things. Uh, all those risk management responsibilities uh, fall to Charlie, through our city attorney. Those are, those are job functions. The prosecution, he does, of course, is another function. Code enforcement and selected other prosecutions that are best held in-house after consultation with the police chief or others. He does conflict cases, both felony and misdemeanor, uh, outside the city. He always asks me about those, uh, those are those maintain relationships and provide resources to us if the shoe gets on the other foot and we need a conflict attorney for some reason. So, uh, exactly in that regard. His compensation right now is just under a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. That is uh, about uh, guardians at one sixty-two. And it goes up from there. Cities that contract for their city attorneys, I just checked with a couple, Caldwell and Napa. The bigger cities that contract, uh, those contracts are two thirty for one. And you get so many hours for that, and then salary after that. And about two seventy or two eighty for the other Napa system. So that's, that's information. I think we need to make a market adjustment. Keep our city attorney in the same stadium as those peers. All of whom work for a much less desirable mayor and council, but nonetheless. Little opinion there, I don't think it's, we're not recording this. Oh, yeah, so I, but uh, anyway, that's my, that's, that's the lead into this. And I'd like to hear from the council so that we can incorporate whatever changes we need into the tenured budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe ask questions of Mr. Waddams?
Sure.
Mr. Waddams? Um, how long have you been acting or handling the HR duties?
I'm gonna say approximately six years.
And why did you assume those roles?
Says yes.
As a result of what?
I don't know, well, I don't know if that was a result of anything, there, I think we had a couple of internal problems.
And changing from the contract, bringing you in.
When, uh, when Mr. Walker, we used to have a contract.
Okay.
So the reorg was twenty sixteen where we had to do, or we, a decision was made for reorganization, so it may have been back in twenty sixteen.
It was assimilated over not too long a period of time because we had some internal issues, had to bring outside council to help us resolve them.
Mr. Waddams?
Council President Page. The mayor enumerated eloquently uh, some of the duties you take on, thank you for that, extra duties that most would argue are not the duties of an attorney. Not notably absent in that discussion, but we just overlooked was civil litigation. This year, we spent many in executive session, some lunches, a lot of anxiety, some time with the press. For civil litigation, and I don't think any of those hours came close to the time you spent on that. For those of you who may not understand how lawyers are paid, those that work in civil litigation generally make quite a bit more than those who work in, in the public sector. And we were fortunate to handle that in-house, whereas some of these other attorneys or firms, municipal firms will outsource those that litigation, which can be expensive. We, we know what ACHD spent fighting us. So Mr. Waddams, could you talk a little bit about that? What percent of your time is spent in this last year in particular with civil litigation?
Uh, Councilman, uh, Council President Page, I'm gonna again, give you an approximate because I didn't run those numbers and I'm happy to run those numbers because I did track my time on ACHD. But I would say between the ACHD litigation and the Jason Jones litigation, that probably occupied sixty percent of my time, fifty to sixty percent of my time.
I, I mean, I, I am here to firmly support a market adjustment. I, I think a sizable adjustment's in order.
I agree, Mr. Mayor. Well, well deserved, I do know what the gap is between public service and the large law firms that are contracted. You've always been prompt to answer my queries and have extended conversations and I appreciate that as well.
Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, part of, part of the challenge, I think that not knowing all the background in detail, I think sometimes, you know, my, my point of reference is working within small businesses. And oftentimes you find uh, somebody that ends up wearing many hats. And usually that's a very unique individual and, you know, their qualifications bring a lot of extra value to the enterprise or in this case, the city. It, it, and a way to look at that is if I have staff come to me and say, you know, you hired me as an admin assistant, but you're now having me review payroll and you're asking me to confer on this that, that is beyond my defined roles. Oftentimes I've, in my managerial style, I find that is very easy to justify a disproportionate uh, compensation to individuals that are assuming additional roles. And it doesn't sound as if the mayor is asking for disproportionate uh, market adjustment. Nor is Mr. Waddams, it doesn't sound as if, I haven't heard anything saying, yeah, I want to be wildly overcompensated or, you know, not within the market range. So I find it um, pretty easy to, to justify and reward, you know, part of, I think, when you talk about compensation, is you want people to feel good about the services, right? And, you know, to, to Mr. Waddams' credit, the fact that he was willing to bring this up indicates that, you know, he's aware of and likely not feeling great about his level of compensation relative to his peers, so I always factor that in. Another way I look at it is, you know, is he being fiscally responsible on behalf of the city? And when I ask that question, my, my internal response is yes, and I'm open to discussion there about the fact that he's handled the intern component of his job, or not really his job, he was asked to step in and handle that, he's done that.
It's his job now.
But he's also been responsible in that he's been cautious in adding staff and headcount and overheads to the city. I think leveraging interns is laudable, but it certainly saved the city time or money over time. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of justification to accommodate a market adjustment. In looking at it, I've gotta be honest, is and initially I looked at the gap and went, ooh, this is, we're contemplating a big jump. And that, you know, your dumb reaction is like, well, you know, let's split that and catch it up. But then um, dropping back and considering it further is like, well, why wait? Is, is that fair to any employee that after they've contributed and been loyal and, and done what we've asked? Why penalize them and make them wait for what they've been, you know, the reward that they've actually worked toward or worked for? So all of that's waiting and I, I do have and I'm emphatically supportive of the market adjustment. I have one concern, and that is we do at some point, I believe it would be responsible for us as an organization to actually look at and create a budget for a junior attorney or an intern, because if anything were to happen to Charlie, you don't really have a backup. So that's my, the, the one concern I have. That at some point, and it doesn't need to happen, I don't think right away. But I do believe at some point the city needs to consider what our, what our backup plan is, you know? And I understand we could contract that discussion, however, I think there's a lot of value having somebody in-house that has that continuity, understands the culture, understands the players within our little city, et cetera, et cetera. So having said all of that, I, unless you have anything, I, I would recommend to the council that we go ahead and make a, a pretty, in my mind, substantial market adjustment and adjust Mr. Waddams' salary to a hundred and sixty-two.
That is in line with the number I had in my head. There's not a great distance between that number and the number I had. Talk numbers, but since, since we're doing that, that's uh, commensurate to the next lowest paid city attorney in our county. I didn't have a number, so I'll leave it up to the mayor's discretion.
Well, these are, you know, these are interesting things, I appreciate that. Appreciate the number. It's it's really, council has not been able to make that decision. Happy to visit. Charlie, I'm not sure negotiates the right.
So, Mr. Mayor, so is the decision, I guess that, my impression of decision wasn't specific numbers more of the approval market adjustment and that would be based on discussion of you and Mr. Waddams? Or we need to come up with this, or?
Well, I think you can. The information was provided so you'd understand some of the parameters.
Sure, the members.
No, I, I just, I don't know the protocol.
You know, Bill Marriott, guardian, it's a hundred and sixty-two, public defenders that work for the county are a hundred and ninety.
Ten pennies.
City attorneys, gonna be guardians a lot better than garden city, uh, he's got lots of attorneys.
He might have four, yeah.
Might have four lawyers that work for him, so you parcel out. Contracts, purchasing you do, charge, whatever, of course they have, they charter. So
And all of those, all of those in-house attorneys are, are costing the city less than the contract attorneys of our sister cities, you know, Napa and Caldwell? Looking at Napa's two hundred and seventy thousand.
I deal sticker shop on all of the stuff.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm not questioning the amount, just more of the process, you know, how that works.
Mr. Mayor, what am I, I'm sorry, what are my concerns is obviously this draws out of the stabilization. But you identified we have about sixty thousand, we would be taking out.
You know. One thirty-eight, one sixty-two.
Does that make the city at risk?
Are you looking for a motion?
I, I didn't know we were, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I didn't know we were.
You know, we, we really didn't put this up as an action item. I have all the administrative latitude I need to put it in the budget. Action on it. Give it a maybe, mind on it, and the budget number in there, I think you can move that budget or change that budget, that's, that's, that happens. Budget time.
That's a good way to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and, and we had a, a very good conversation in advance on, on this and so I'm in favor of the, the kind of increase that Councilmember Jordan, Paige, you're talking about.
There may, maybe one other.
Let's do it.
Should we just do that now?
Now can we go home?
James is like, should we do it now?
The other one that I want to look at is Charlie. So I'll let you know in advance. Okay, the motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
All favor.
We stand to adjourn, thank you all again.